Testing, 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 testing.
Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call this regular meeting to order at 5:03. Mr. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Duran.
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Mangone.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
Councilmember Campos.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Halter.
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios.
Here.
Seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. And Councilmember Schumacher, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Yes, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we do have a special presentation tonight. We have an award presentation by the California Association of Public Information Officials. I'd like to welcome Mr. Stephen Baird from the California Association of Public Information Officials here tonight to present a special recognition for excellence in crisis communications. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Baird. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez Palacios and council for allowing me just a few minutes of your time. My name is Stephen Baird. My day job, I work down the road at Los Virginus Municipal Water District in their public affairs department. And then I also, why I'm here today is I serve as the vice president of awards for the California Association of Public Information Officials. That's CAPO. Well, who is CAPO? We're a professional organization of about 1,200 members throughout the state of California dedicated to really supporting and elevating public communicators. So all communicators through the public space, whether it be from counties, cities, special districts like me, even, you know, as far as elected officials, press people. So it's a wide gamut of public communication officials. And how do we elevate these people? Through a myriad of programming, including mentorship programs. We support the accreditation in public relationship, in relations. We do webinars and in-person training such as PIO 101, Strategic Communications. And recently, we just completed a two-day Crisis Communications Academy, which is really focused on giving public communicators the tools they need to respond to crisis. Our big event is our annual conference. It's three days where we convene once a year. It's basically knowledge share, network build. We have a wide range of educational programming that supports our continuing education requirements. And what I, my favorite as the vice president of awards is we celebrate our EPIC Award winners. The EPIC Awards is basically our awards program that looks at the best communication and outreach projects over the course of the previous year. We have a team, partners at the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. They judge our award submissions to make sure it's as fair and transparent as possible. That's a really big part that we celebrate. But there's another set of awards, and those are the special awards. The special awards are given to individuals who really exemplify the dedication and skill really necessary to be the top of the top in public communications. One of these awards is the Frank Potter Cowan Crisis Communications Leader Award. Established in 2017, this award recognizes a public information professional or team who've demonstrated extraordinary success in leading a team during a natural disaster, act of terrorism, or reputational crisis during the prior calendar year. This award was developed to recognize the men and women who lead teams during a crisis. And this year, your PIO, Jennifer Nance, was recognized as the Frank Potter Cowan Crisis Communicator of the Year. There are far more qualified people to actually talk about the incident and her role and where she really excelled in those moments. And I'm definitely going to leave that to them. But what I can speak to, though, is the skill and dedication she exemplified in responding to the Pierpont gasoline leak by providing the timely, clear, and critical information to over 5,000 residents. I think it's incredibly important to recognize, there is no accidental excellence, especially in communications and especially during an emergency. The excellence shown by Jennifer is not by accident. It is by dedication for the community and true skill as a communicator. These traits have also been shared with CAPO, not just in us recognizing her with this award, but Jennifer has shared her knowledge and skill by presenting both at our annual conference as well as part of our webinar series. We thank her for sharing her knowledge and really being a positive influence on CAPO and our members. But it's also super important to recognize that none of this happens in a vacuum. And so as a representative of CAPO, I wanted to thank the board and the management team here at the city of Ventura because by you really creating an environment where she can participate in CAPO, share the knowledge, bring her team in with it, it really helps make our organization the top public communicating organization in the state. And so for that, I want to thank you again for your time. Jennifer, congratulations. And I would like to turn it over to Chief Dave Andia.
Thank you. Mayor, councilmembers, Ventura community, just a reminder, a little bit of what became the Bay Shore Incident and Jennifer's role in that incident. This was something that took place over a number of hours as it began to unfold. And as we realized that this was going to be a very big community event, it was a public safety issue, it was a life safety issue, it was disruptive to people in their neighborhoods, and very concerning to our, to our, your constituents and our customers. And immediately down at the command post, almost in the first hour or two, Jennifer was there right by my side at the command post. And we were talking about crisis communications, we were talking about what we were going to do and how to do it. And she hit the ground running and pretty much, I think, I want to say went full speed for days. And this was a very protracted event initially. And then it went on for a long time with the rest of our city team working on the repairs. And I think it's important to note that in the initial phases of this incident, Jennifer came in, she immediately started putting together crisis communications with social media. She put together community outreach messaging that was reaching not only the immediate neighborhood but the city as a whole to understand what was happening. And then I think the biggest thing that we accomplished, and I was very appreciative, Jennifer somehow pulled together onsite press conferences. And I don't know if you've ever been to one that's onsite of an emergency, but it is a task and a half to get the invitations out, to let local media know, to invite them, give them a time of press conference, and then prepare people like me to be ready for that press conference. And Jennifer and her team did all of that in the initial phases of the incident. And as it went on, we had multiple onsite press conferences. In addition to that, she established an emergency alert webpage that the city had that was constantly being updated, that our community could go to, reference for real-time information and for transparency to let people know, this is what we're doing, this is what we're still concerned about, and these are our goals over the next 24 to 48 hours. And I think, I don't remember exactly, sorry Jen, but the number of connections that were made was staggering because it was far outside the 5,000 residents that were impacted. It was into the hundreds of thousands of connections through social media and through that webpage because of the interest that it had. And again, we got a lot of coverage. We had helicopters overhead. And communications was key with the community, not only with what was happening, but for the evacuations, how long they were going to last, when people could get back in. And even if people weren't happy about the information, they had the information. And that was because of Jen and her team, Jennifer and her team. And then lastly, even as we left the scene and the rest of the city team began to work on repairs, Jennifer still stayed engaged. She kept the information out there. She attended community council meetings for transparency, which increased trustworthiness in the community to let people know that we weren't done as a city and hadn't just walked away from it, but rather we were still very involved in the mitigation and where we were as far as healing and coming back to full strength in that area after the emergency occurred. So that's just a reminder of the incredible job that Jennifer did and her team in a time when we're mitigating the emergency. There's a lot going on in the background. And so this is a very worthy and well-deserved award, and I couldn't be prouder and happier to have you receive this today, Jennifer. So congratulations.
Wow, thank you. I want to keep this short and sweet, but it's such an honor. Thank you, Stephen, for coming up and representing CAPO. CAPO has been a huge asset to us here at the city, not only their mentorship, but their network of talented PIOs across the state. It's been incredible to offer that training and really keep us ready in the incidence of a crisis. I also want to thank our teams with the fire department, obviously Dave and Andia was crucial in being one of the spokespersons during those press conferences. Also Battalion Chief Sean Hughes, who was our on-camera interviews, doing all of those whenever we had media inquiries. Our subject matter experts with Ventura Water, you know, Vince Inez and Gina Dorrington, I was super grateful for their expertise in helping to craft the messaging. This was a really challenging incident because unlike a flood or a fire, we couldn't see the threat, right? We had vapors that were in our sewer system. And so it's hard to convey the dangers and the seriousness of those two evacuations when you can't see them. So this was a unique challenge, and we couldn't have done it without all of those folks. And then just lastly, thanking Emily Ayala on my team for being there with me, working out of the back of a truck in the hazmat rig, and just trying to get those timely updates on social media, on the website. It was just incredibly grateful to have that. So like Chief said, we're not done yet. We still have a lot of recovery to go. But I just really appreciate the community for staying engaged and giving us feedback. Howard Stern with the Pierpont Community Council was paramount during those early evacuations to help get the message out to our networks. And then our then-mayor, Joe Schrader, was really great and collaborative and working with us. So again, thank you. Can't take all the credit alone. It's all of those people that really helped make this happen. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. We will now move on to our closed session report. Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, the council took up all three items on the closed session agenda, and there was no reportable action.
Thank you. On to council communications. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. If I can get my slide up, please. Appreciate it. Just on, very quickly, Councilmember Mangone and I will be doing our, or the walk and talk opportunity, step with your reps. So meet us at Kimball Park near the Aquatic Center at nine o'clock this Saturday. So you can chat with us. We'll be walking for about an hour. It's literally just two laps, friends. So join us, come out, exercise a little bit, get your steps in. Can I get the next slide? And then if you're not really into walking, which I completely understand, some of us are not mobile and don't want to wake up that early, I will be doing a coffee chat, or maybe don't want to talk to the councilmember Mangone. You can talk to me at the Barnes &amp; Noble at 10:30 same day. So right after the step with your rep, I'll be at Barnes &amp; Noble off of telephone on Saturday, the 28th, from 10:30 to noon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe I had Councilmember Campos followed by Councilmember Duran.
Okay, it's that time of year again. Do you have the slides? Yes. That time of year again for the lunch at the library, at the Ventura Avenue Library, also Oak View and Solis Library in Oxnard. The Ventura Avenue Library will be serving lunches from July, hmm, forgot the date, July 7th, I believe, until July 31st, Monday through Thursday, from noon until 1:00. All ages of young people from birth to age 18 will be served. Next slide, please. The, the summer reading program has begun also at the library. You can sign up online at their website, in the library, or with the QR code displayed on this slide. There's all kinds of prizes. Kids learn, earn prizes along the way for every book they read or certain numbers of books. Adults can also join and qualify for larger prizes. And there will be this year a entry to win annual passes for Universal Studios. And everybody who participates can qualify for that drawing. On the right side of the calendar, or of the slide, is a calendar of events at the Avenue Library, including summer family game days, games on wheels, and a visit from Kona Ice, science heroes, many magical moments for the families on Ventura Avenue. Next slide, please. The Ventura Community, Westside Community Council is having their revitalization subcommittee meeting as they do each month. This month is special, on June 25th. It'll start at 6:30 PM. They'll be discussing a Westside Food Hub and how the community council can help people to grow more community gardens on the west side. Then that'll open up opportunities and strategizing with outreach to businesses and individuals to distribute fresh foods to our community along the avenue from the Avenue Community Outreach Center across the street from Kellogg Park. The next general meeting of the Westside Community Council will be August 6th at Bell Arts Factory. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to invite the public to join us as we celebrate a major milestone in the largest home key project in Ventura County. Thanks to $32 million in funding, along with generous support from the city of Ventura, the county of Ventura, and other key partners, the housing authority of the San Buenaventura is transforming the former 142-room La Quinta into 134 studio apartments for individuals experiencing or at risk of homelessness. The innovative project is about more than just housing. Each apartment will include access to onsite supportive services designed to help residents stabilize, heal, and thrive. We've reached an exciting phase. 63 apartments are now move-in ready. And construction is underway on the remaining two buildings. All 134 units are expected to be completed by the end of January. So come celebrate this transformative movement with each and every one of us on Thursday at 10:00 AM at the Old La Quinta, the Valentine Road Project. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just a little bit of an update is the mayor and I did our Get the Scoop outreach to the community at the farmer's market this last time on, I think it was June 14th. Very well received, really fun. Definitely do that event again. There were so many people out and about. And there was a lot happening that day. So it says a lot about our farmer's market and how successful and how fun it is and how much it emboldens everything that we love about Ventura. It was really neat to see everybody. Also, there was, the Humane Society had a very successful fundraiser about a week ago out in Ohio at their facility. And just for point of information is that they are looking for yet another site to house larger animals, horses, and other things, perhaps on the Oxnard Plain or perhaps in Ventura someplace. So if you know something and you care and love about, love animals, know they're doing a great job. We got a chance to see the one dog, and I'm sorry I forgot her name, but she has a mental illness that they, we're going to put her down seven years ago because of it. And they ended up, some loving family took her. And she actually skips when she walks. It's part of the illness, but it's absolutely adorable to see. So seeing all these animals was a real treat for me. And I think there were several of us there as well. Ventura Regional Sanitation District, which I serve on, on behalf of the city, we're looking for a new executive director. The, our previous executive director is retiring. And so we had a very successful round of interviews just recently. So you should be hearing something, I hope, shortly. And this Thursday is the Downtown Ventura Partners Meeting. And that's at 9:00 AM at the Crown Plaza. And Josh Addison is the new president of the Downtown DVP. And I'll always look forward to that meeting. There's a lot happening downtown, especially through the summertime. So that's going to be pretty exciting as we move forward. And then finally, the G-PAC, the next G-PAC meeting will be on July, on July 15th. And that would be meeting 33. So we're wrapping it all up. And I think the mayor and I are yet to decide if we'll be having a Get the Scoop in July. If we don't have a Get the Scoop, then feel free to reach out with emails, phone call. And if we need to set up a meeting to discuss any issues or ideas pertaining to the city, I'll definitely make myself available to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else on the queue, so I'll go ahead and give my quick updates, mainly congratulatory remarks and welcoming remarks. I'd like to welcome Kayleen Garcia to the city team. She's our new economic development data analyst. I met her today at the official ribbon cutting for Marina Park Playground. And so thank you for choosing to be here at the city of Ventura. I also wanted to congratulate Commander, or former Commander Matt Kane, who recently started as the new assistant police chief. Matt is a 25-year veteran of the department with nearly 30 years in law enforcement overall. And he began his new role this past weekend. So congratulations and thank you as well for your service. And lastly, wanted to congratulate Sofia Garcia, who was promoted to code enforcement inspector in our community development department. And then just a quick announcement to the advisory, Ventura County Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council has several openings for new members, in particular for veterans representative and service provider. And there's a deadline to apply for these two new positions, which is June 30th. And if anyone is interested in that, you can visit www.vc-triple-a.org slash AC vacancy. And those are my announcements. Thank you. So moving forward, city manager communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to start with a brief update on our front-street construction shoring failure. We have temporary stabilization work of the shoring being completed. The developer is wrapping up data collection to help determine the next steps. And will share their findings with city staff by the end of the week. A draft plan for long-term repairs and stabilization is in progress, and will be shared with the city once data collection is finalized. We'll continue to share updates with the community as new information becomes available. You can follow updates that are made regularly on our website on the splash page at cityofventura.ca.gov. Today marked the official reopening of the Marina Park Playground. It's pretty amazing. It was a beautiful sunny afternoon. The playground was packed with children enjoying the new amenities. Thank you to everyone who came out and celebrated with us and the great work by our teams that worked to make this a reality. Our next council meeting this Thursday, a special meeting, June 26th, we are expecting a large crowd. The topic is of high public interest. And I wanted to send out a few reminders. Please know that individual public comment times may be reduced by the council and/or the mayor to ensure we can hear from all speakers as possible. It certainly depends on the size of the crowd. Seating will be limited in the council chambers. We will have overflow available in the community meeting room down the hallway. We still have virtual options. You can watch live on YouTube. You can join via Zoom if you'd like to participate in the conversation that way as well. As a reminder, applause is not permitted during the meeting to help us manage time and create a respectful and supportive environment for people willing to step out and share their views. We encourage the use of the sign language for applause as a respectful alternative. And lastly, there is a signage policy in effect in the council chambers to help us maintain safety and visibility for all. If you have a sign that's on a stick or a pole or some kind of rigid frame, it is not permitted. Signs blocking the view of others are not permitted. And then signs that are required to be held by more than one person are not permitted either. For additional participation guidelines, please visit the council protocols on the city's website. And we appreciate everyone's cooperation as we prepare for Thursday's meeting. Beyond Thursday, we have meetings on Tuesday, July 1st, Tuesday, July 8th, and Wednesday, July 9th. And Mayor, if I may, I'd like to have Chief Dickey come up to talk about some of the concerns we've all heard about related to ICE immigration enforcement in our community. Thanks. Thanks, Chief.
Welcome, Chief.
Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. I thought a lot about what I wanted to communicate here today. And so I think being as concise and direct as possible is probably the best start. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been in contact with several of you on an individual basis at this point regarding this issue. We've done extensive outreach with our city team, also with the police department as well in the community. But I just want to be very clear that we're aware of the concern in our community regarding ongoing immigration enforcement throughout California, but specifically in the city of Ventura. And I wanted to address that issue with you and hopefully get this message out so that everyone is very clear on this. Your police department, the Ventura Police Department, is not involved in any immigration enforcement. We don't work with ICE. We do not plan operations with ICE. We, as a department, have and will continue to abide by SB 54, which is also known as the California Values Act. What the SB 54 contains is directly in our department policy. So it's codified in law and our department policy. It was signed in October of 2017 and went into effect January 1st of 2018. Since then, we, as a department, have Since then, we, as a department, have followed law and department policy. That has never wavered in our entire time since then, and I want to be very clear that we do not support their operations and won't support their operations. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this point. There's obviously a big concern in the community. I've heard from many people. We're reaching out to the community councils. We're talking about these issues in any form that we can to make sure that people are very clear on this.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
No. I have a question, just because I just heard about it, and I was going to call you, but instead I figured I'd ask here. Recently, the mayor of Huntington Park, I believe it was, directed their police department to have ICE agents, I guess, identify themselves. As you know, they wear masks or glasses, and they're not really identifying as, when they detain people. Is that some, and because you and I have had conversations about different levels of government, I just kind of wanted to have your take on that, if you've heard of that, and if so, what are your thoughts on that?
So that's the first I've heard of it. I know that there's a move in the California Legislature right now to possibly propose some legislation regarding this. I am not well-versed on it because it is just proposed. I've seen the press clippings from that, but I am not familiar with anything that would require them to abide by that at this point. I will speak very candidly about our relationship with the more local or regional ICE office. We are in direct communication with them on a very professional level, to be very frank with you. They have been very forthcoming with us regarding information that we request from them. This is not something that's come up with them. We do have a county group of police chiefs and the sheriff who meet about this issue, but other issues, but this issue bi-weekly right now. We have, our next scheduled meeting is on Friday, so more may come from that, and I'll be happy to share that as appropriate moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Some people have reached out to me, Chief, about some of the, I believe there are probably contractors who are doing the picking up of people in our community, and they're wearing a vest or a cover over their shirts, and it says in very big four-inch high block letters, "Police." And they have a badge, it's not a Ventura Police badge, it just simply says ICE on it, but that is making people believe that your department is involved with this process. Is there anything we can do or any statement we can issue to convince people that just simply the word "Police" is not the Ventura Police Department?
Thank you very much for that question. The best thing I can tell you is that I do not, nor do local police, have the ability to tell federal agents what they should wear, how they should wear. Clearly, this is causing confusion in the community and unfairly looping our department in as if we are involved, and we are very aware of that. I do not have the ability to do that. However, unequivocally, I'm saying that it is not us. We are not with them. We're not involved in their operations, nor can we be. We're bound by state law and by department policy that would completely separate us from those operations.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you. I don't see any other, I don't see any other questions, so thank you so much. So moving on on our agenda to public communications, this portion of public communications is the part of the meeting where members of the public can address city council on any city business that is not listed on tonight's agenda. The city council cannot discuss, deliberate, or vote on items raised during public comments. As a reminder, please help us maintain decorum during the meeting so that everyone feels comfortable participating and providing public comments. You can show your support in an inclusive and respectful way by using the American Sign Language, sign for applause by raising your hands and gently twisting them back and forth. Initial public communications period is limited to 20 speakers with priority given to in-person speakers. So if you would like to speak during this public comment portion, please submit your speaker card now. All cards must be turned in at this time to ensure accurate count of speakers. Mr. City Clerk, do we have speaker cards and submit it for public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. We have received two speaker cards for in-person comment. If you are on the meeting remote and you would like to provide public comment on non-agenda related matters, so again, a matter not on tonight's agenda, please use the raise hand feature now. Mayor, we have three speakers for general public comment, four speakers for general public comment.
Great, and because there are fewer than 10, we will give them three minutes each. So please call the speakers, and public comment is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Judy Howar, followed by Kevin Daly, followed by Nedra, and our final speaker is Trevor Gottsman.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. First of all, I have a very special request. Please consider repairing the sidewalks on North Palm. It's really, really difficult going up or down, and you know, those are city sidewalks. Second, I would like to suggest that you look into a climate super fund called Polluters' Pay Act, which could better serve us in fighting climate change. And the third is, I really appreciate the support for any opportunity to show compassion for our citizens of all ethnicities. And then the third is, all these great opportunities that you talked about tonight for volunteers and help, we used to have somebody when Rosely Measures was our council lady, her mother used to be out there at the entrance to City Hall, and she would tell the public whoever came in that there are these opportunities. I think it would be good to re-initiate that. Thank you so much for your work.
Next speaker is Kevin Daly.
Fellow citizens and council members, at a city council meeting in April, Mayor Palacios, during public comment portion, banged her gavel and said, "We do not do prayers," when a lady tried to say prayers, exposing the city and herself to lawsuits. Several weeks ago, Deputy Mayor Halter spoke against ICE raids at a press conference in LA, at a LA City Council mayor, with Palacios standing right behind her, acting like they were speaking on behalf of the city council when they were not authorized to do so, putting the city in jeopardy of losing federal funding. The city council will now be voting on Resolution Number 2025 on Thursday evening, which calls for part of the city budget to be used to fund nonprofit illegal immigrant groups to help illegal aliens avoid capture by ICE, further putting the city council, federal funding, in jeopardy. I think it is poor choices. The city council has done a number of things over the last six months that do not make any sense to me, that you're doing very stupid things to put the city council in a position of losing the federal funding. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nedra. Nedra, you should be able to unmute yourself. Go ahead, Nedra.
Hi. Actually, my name is Stephen Rosenthal, and Nedra is right next to me. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead with your comment, please.
So, sir, I'm calling to talk about, about the apartment complex called Trade Winds on Preble Avenue in Ventura on South Main. Anyways, I'm calling to, in regards to the housing, or the owners of the property are trying to remove the garages and storage units from all the tenants in the building when, in fact, it is on the agreement of the lease that we have access to accessible and secure parking and storage units. At the same time, they are attempting to turn the 19 garages that are now here into one unit, one-bedroom unit, ADU, accessible additional apartments, in which case that will mean that 19 to 30 cars that are currently here at this building will now have to park on the street. Currently, there is no parking available on the street within blocks of this apartment. Many residents have received multiple parking tickets over the years for not having anywhere to park. In the morning at work time and at the evening when people are returning home from work, you may have to go three blocks to find a place to park. By removing these garages from the tenants, we no longer have accessibility, we no longer have disabled ability, we no longer have parking access. Many of the residents here at this building are single mothers with children, arriving home in the dark, having to walk blocks to get home. There is no alley access, and there is no disabled access. In one final point, my main concern with talking with the council today is to understand how they received permitted documents permitting them to turn these units into ADAs without any comment from the community, the tenants, or the public, or parking assessments and audits. None of this is taking place. They are simply saying that on July 31st of this year, all tenants will vacate their garages and storage units, any items that are left behind will be forfeited, period. They're offering us, for example, I'd like to close with saying, I myself am a 61-year-old, honorably discharged, disabled, American veteran, a veteran of the Navy. One week ago, I had surgery. I now have nowhere to park my car and must walk blocks to get to my apartment while I carry a colostomy bag. In no way was any of this presented to the tenants or the public at large, or was there a parking audit, or any kind of retribution, or my main concern and the concerns of all the tenants of this building.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Trevor Gottsman. Trevor, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, community members, city staff, and of course, as Spencer Orin always says, Michael and translation. I'm here for the same reason I'm almost always here, is we're, you know, I'm a guest, like a lot of these immigrants. I am a green card holder. At the same time, this is where I live. I have chosen to live here. This is a wonderful city. It's a wonderful community, and I have to thank Chief Dickey and all of the police and those in, you know, who are running our city and those who make the laws and rules and regulations for being an honorable, being honorable to our community. I walk these four-legged animals, I follow them, and it's a 24/7/365 endeavor. And I have to say that, over the years, I have found, because I carry the leash and this animal that lives with me, I trust him more than I trust most other creatures. I let him show me what he needs to show me, and so, and it keeps him healthy, it keeps him vital, and at the same time, it enhances my life. And I've noticed over the years how many more people have started doing that, have had the courage to let them, you know, we've got leash laws, we've got all kinds of laws and rules and regulations, but not all of them are healthy. And many of them, of course, are, you know, we're speaking about, I'm going back to, jumping back and forward, but we're going back to cars and the transport, and we look at Main Street right now, as sad as it is for a lot of the businesses losing their customers that are so familiar with just getting in and parking and getting out and leaving, now they've actually got to go and walk. And it is a challenge. It is a challenge. It's always a challenge, but these are the challenges that keep us healthy. These are the things that really, over the long term, bring things back into order. And I always say, you know, it comes back to, we've got to keep the balance, and what is the balance? There's pluses and minuses, and zero is the balance. We come here with nothing, we leave here with nothing. But the good intentions, the intentions, that conscience, when we each of us acknowledge who we are and be ourselves, that is how we're going to get balance, and this is, the city has it. The city has it in abundance. I've had neighbors that come over to me and, because I just don't, because I, I need to sleep occasionally, they come over and they are starting to help me because the city, one of the neighbors will complain, and the city will get involved, and then I have to now sort of adhere to the rules and regulations, which is healthy. But at the same time, I may not like it, but it's healthy.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are there any comments or follow-up related to public comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to note that I heard the comments about the sidewalk on North Palm Street. We did some repair work there recently, but we'll take another look and see if there's something we can do with that very tricky stretch of steep roadway. The Preble Avenue housing issue, parking issue, really, I'm not familiar with the project. It sounds an awful lot like other projects where garages are being converted into ADUs and displacing not only parked vehicles but adding more residents and vehicles to areas that are congested. We will engage with the tenants and residents in that area and talk through what possible remedies there are, but that is a very difficult situation for us.
Great, thank you for that. Moving on on the agenda, we'll go now to consent items. We have 19 consent items on tonight's agenda for consideration, and just wanted to know if there are any items to be pulled or questions on any of those items. If not, I do have to announce that I have to recuse myself on items number 10 and 12 because of the employment that I hold with the county. Oh, all these names came up. So do we have questions or items to be pulled? Councilmember Schumacher?
I have a comment on nine and question on 13 and 14.
Okay. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a comment on number 13 and a comment on number 15, please.
Okay. Councilmember Campos?
Comment on 13, comment on 19.
And Deputy Mayor Halter?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that as a council member that serves on 11 different committees on behalf of the city council, I want to mention that I currently serve as the city's representative on the Board of DVP. So on item 13, I've consulted with our city attorney's office, and while my board membership is a conflict of interest, it's treated as a non-interest under the law, so I intend to participate in this agenda item. By making this disclosure, I asked the city clerk to make sure this is a part of the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I've got comments on nine, 13, 15, and 19, and then questions on 13 and 14. So we'll go ahead and get, let's do the comments on number nine. Councilmember Schumacher?
Can I have Chief Dickey up? So I, reading this, it just makes me, and I just wanted to send you some kudos on being able to have this type of service for your officers. I really want to just appreciate you for having this initiative to ensure that our first responders are taken care of. So those, that's my comment for number nine. Thank you for having this service, especially now, knowing the importance of what this means for our officers, so thank you for being able to have that for them.
I really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Comments on number 13? We'll start with Councilmember Duran and then Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my strong support for the proposed three-year general service agreement with Downtown Ventura Partners. For over a decade, DVP has been a key partner in keeping downtown clean, safe, and welcoming. This new agreement not only continues essential ambassador and maintenance services, but it also expands them in thoughtful and efficient ways, including restroom stewardship, on-call cleanup, and support for Main Street moves. These services directly support our goals for public safety and economic vitality, and I believe that this partnership continues to be a smart investment in our community. So I just urge my colleagues to support this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
And I want to add to Councilmember Duran's comment and say, I know personally each of the Downtown ambassadors and most of the cleaning crew. of the Downtown ambassadors and most of the cleaning crew. And they are really the face of Main Street Moves for people coming from out of town and from other countries. They're very kind and genuine, even with the people that they're asking to move along. And they also do a very good job of taking care of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to comments on number 15. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my support for this five-year extension for the management agreement with Kemper Sports. Kemper has proven to be a reliable and committed partner, especially in the aftermath of the 2003 flooding at Buena Ventura. Their efforts helped preserve the course and ensure timely reopening, even if temporary. With their strong track record, marketing expertise in alignment with our vision of municipal golf, I believe the extension supports both our recreational and economic goals. So I'm confident Kemper will continue to serve our community well and just urge my colleagues to move forward with this.
Thank you. And Councilmember Campos, you had comments on number 19?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the entire Public Works Department and several of our other employees. And Public Works Department, going back before Charlie Ebling was here, to Phil Nelson, Mary Joyce Arver, Barbara McCormick, who looked at every nook and cranny in this chambers and in the building to make sure that when this starts, it gets done properly. So I want to thank all the employees for their work on this.
Thank you for that. We'll go on to the questions now. And I have a question on 11, but we'll do 13 and 14 first and then come back to 11. And I think Councilmember, who had Council, Councilmember Schumacher on 13?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have Director Zara Sua please come up? Or Ms. Fox? Whoever can answer 13?
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, Council. I'm going to have Emily Fox join me up here and she will be able to best assist your question.
Yeah, so I just have, I just need an understanding on the training for the ambassadors in DVP. I know they do some, they address the low-level quality of life concerns. So in the past few months, when we've had some public comments, some people have been expressing some negative interactions with the ambassadors, specifically them interacting with unhoused individuals. And it's kind of left me unsettled. So I'd like to just understand the training that you provide or the ambassadors go through in being able to address our unhoused individuals in Main Street area.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the record, I'm Emily Fox, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. While our department oversees the combined general services agreement, I'd actually like to invite up our Downtown Ventura Partners Executive Director, Kevin Clarisi. He'll be able to provide more information on the training that our Downtown ambassadors receive and then answer any additional questions. So, Kevin?
I'm getting the three-parter. I love it. All right.
You are. Kevin Clarisi, Director of Downtown Ventura Partners, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers, staff. It's a pleasure to be here. And Councilmember Schumacher, I'm grateful for the question because it's a very important one and it's really at the heart of everything our ambassadors do. The direct question is the training they get. Any new ambassador, we do go through a pretty, you know, rigorous training, you know, protocol. We've been fortunate, because we've been doing this several years now, that we actually have a partnership with Ventura County Behavioral Health, which provides us with some de-escalation techniques that we go through. We also work very closely with our police department. So we do a lot of training on when we make, you know, have to make calls into dispatch, how we can be really good witnesses, how we can provide really good, you know, information. And I would even say, you know, we do a lot of training with our visitor center because at the forefront, what we do is a lot of hospitality, which is trying to make sure any local or resident or visitor feels safe, comfortable, and welcomed anytime they step into downtown. So we really try and approach it, you know, holistically. But I think your question's really at the heart of it is, what do we do or ambassadors do when they have a challenging situation? Or when they're interacting with someone who's having a bad day, for the lack of a better word? And I think the heart of it is, we really try to address the behavior and we really try to treat the person as a person. And we really try hard to get away from what I would call the stigma or the stereotype of we're working with the homeless. I hate that term because it groups, sort of groupthink that applies and gives it sort of a negative perception that someone who's unhoused could be a challenge or could be difficult. We try, we work hard through our training that each ambassador introduces themselves by name to try and interact and meet who they're working with. And we try and work it from a foundation of building a relationship with them so that we can work to try and get them in a place where they can be safer or self-sufficient. And that takes a lot of different forms because I'll be honest, it's a dynamic environment out there. And particularly when you introduce drugs and alcohol and other things. And so they have to come from a place of de-escalation to try and calm the situation, particularly when people are looking at them to try and control the environment. But the core, you know, response is to figure out what's going on and how can we best help you? And the best way I can, and we had an example yesterday, if you don't mind me giving you an example? We actually, we had multiple examples yesterday, actually. And I think the ambassador response is very telling of what we do. It started off in the morning, we had an individual who lost his housing and he had all of his belongings at the end of a public cul-de-sac on a public street and it was generating calls for service. People wanted the police get involved, but instead we had our ambassadors go first. And it came from, how's it going? What's going on? How can we best help you? And in the end, the individual said, and had other help from a friend, I have a storage unit, it's across town, I have nowhere to get there, you know, I'm in a difficult situation. We arranged transportation, we brought our trucks, we helped him load his personal belongings, we provided transportation to the storage container, we helped him unload him, and obviously he thanked us, but the point was, is it wasn't just get off the sidewalk, it was how can we actually assist you?
Right.
And it was a positive outcome. If he didn't react positively, they still have an obligation, though, that they would have had to try to deal with the situation because that does happen too.
Yes, that's perfect. Thank you and more so. Just one more thing, what I'm hearing is, is that you do provide some rigorous training, helping people or your ambassadors be able to interact in the most professional way to the unhoused individuals, and I appreciate that. If there is a negative interaction, who would they go to? Would they go to you? Would they go to DVP? Who can they, who can they talk to in regards to the situation that they were faced with?
They absolutely can come to me.
Right.
And that does come up on occasion. They can come to City Hall. Actually, that comes up on occasion as well. All of our ambassadors have a supervisor, you know, we make our, you know, cell phone numbers are available, readily available through the ambassadors and through the website. And we encourage anyone to interact with them.
Great. Thank you.
You bet. You're welcome.
Thank you. Moving on to questions on number 14? Is that you as well?
Thanks. Sorry, Stacy. Oh, there you are. All right. So this is great. I am so glad that we're finding some solutions for Camino Park. And at the same time, I think I have to ask this question in regards to the 50% matching, which is concerning because it's $4.2 million. So any ideas, I'm sure you do, can you just share where this, where this matching of $4.2 million, if we do get the grant, where is it going to come from? And are you also exploring other grants available to help with the costs?
Thank you, Councilmember Schumacher. So the required 50% match is required in order to apply. We've worked with finance and it has been identified in our parks mitigation fund. However, that being said, once we apply, the due date is in August. We will, we are actively pursuing other grant possibilities to help assist with that match. And then we will, if awarded, also work with our partner, Ventura Community Partnerships Foundation, to possibly do a fundraising campaign similar to what we did with the Royal Verde Inclusive Playground. So the first, this is the first step. And in order to apply, we have to show that we do have the matching funds available, which we do. But once, hopefully, if awarded, we will definitely pursue other options to then contribute to those matching funds.
Yeah, I love that you're thinking about making sure that this is more of an investment so we can get tournaments into tennis tournaments. And also you're hearing that people really want more pickleball. So I really appreciate that. I'm sure that anybody who's watching this, who's a big fan of pickleball, is going to be happy with this. So yeah, I'm going to support this. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. And I had a question on number 11. Is Chief Dickey still here?
Yes.
Thank you. And just, I was reading the staff report and I think I understand the chain of command, but because of everything that's been happening around, I did get a couple of questions in regards to who has jurisdiction over SROs? Should there be any kind of like federal activity, ICE activity within a school or near a school? I mean, I just kind of wanted to give you the opportunity to walk me through the chain of command, if you will, if and anything like that were to occur. Who has jurisdiction over the SROs?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much for the question. I do. So we do. We are the direct supervisors. Two of our rock star SROs are here tonight, Tony Gomez and Jamie McClellan. And they, they report directly to a supervisor, just like anyone else at our department does. If there was ever an issue like this related to schools, anything that we became aware of, Tony and Jamie would make a very fast phone call to us and we would immediately step in at the commander level, command staff level, and provide the proper oversight to ensure that we, again, comply with SB 54 and our department policy.
Great. Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll go ahead and vote on the consent, oh, I'm sorry, yes, public comment on any of the consent items.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not received any public comments for consent items.
Okay. So seeing no public comments and no other comments from council, we'll go ahead and vote on tonight's consent agenda. Reminder that I am recusing from 10 and 11, 10 and 12, I apologize.
I'll move to approve staff's recommendations for items 1 through 19 of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Go ahead and enter your vote. Waiting for three more votes to be entered. All votes are now in. Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, item number 20, the fiscal year 2026 annual assessment rate for street lighting district number 36. We will have a staff presentation. And before that, I just want to make sure that we have confirmed the noticing requirements.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, item 20 has been adequately noticed.
Thank you. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to staff for their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. For the record, my name is Charlie Ebling. I'm your Public Works Director. I have here with me tonight our Deputy Director, Peter Shade, and our staff presenter, Jeff Hereford, had a family emergency, so we're going to pinch hit. And if there's any questions we can't answer, we will definitely get back to you. So we'll take it away, Peter, and we'll go from there.
Okay, there we go. Finally got this microphone working. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. As Mr. Ebling mentioned, my name is Peter Shade. I'm the Assistant Public Director and City Engineer. We are here tonight to present the fiscal year 2026 budget for the street lighting assessment district number 36. This is an annual hearing process to set street lighting assessments for next fiscal year to pay for the most for the cost to operate and maintain nearly 9,000 streetlights or approximately 95% of the streetlights in the city. The boundaries of the district 36 generally encompass the entire city except for areas where new developments have occurred since the passage of Proposition 218. Most of these streetlights are owned and operated by Southern California Edison. A typical residential property will pay about $31 per year as in years past. Base assessment rates have not changed for approximately 30 years and cannot be changed without meeting Proposition 218 voting requirements. Since 2002, expenses to operate District 36 have exceeded revenues. District 36 fund balance covered the shortfalls up until fiscal year 2007, 2008, when the city's general fund began covering the shortfall. For fiscal year 2526, revenues are projected at $894,678 and expenses are projected to be $1,812 and $830. This leaves an estimated District 36 budget shortfall of $918,152. For fiscal year 2526 as in years past, the funding to cover the district shortfall will come from the city's general fund. At the February 25th, 2025 City Council meeting, City Council approved an agreement with Southern California Edison to retrofit SCE-owned and operated streetlights with energy-efficient 2,700 Kelvin LED fixtures. As part of this direction, council directed, gave the direction that as part of this, that 22-watt LED fixtures be used on all residential streets to balance energy savings with community lighting needs. SCE began the retrofit work in late April of this year and is on track to complete the project by July 1st. This timeline aligns with the start of the new fiscal year, allowing the city to benefit immediately from the estimated annual savings of approximately $385,860. While there have been some resident requests for light shields to minimize light spill over into adjacent properties, the number of requests have been relatively low. SCE has been responsive, installing shields quickly and effectively. Additionally, staff has worked closely with SCE to ensure that 59 shields are installed in sensitive habitat areas. The recommendations in the staff report support the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area of continue to maintain and improve the condition of the roads, water, storm drain, parks, municipal facilities, and Main Street Moves infrastructure. In conclusion, staff is recommending adoption of the resolution loving assessments within the street lighting district 36 for fiscal year 2526 pursuant to the Street Light Act of 1919. And with that, Mr. Ebling and I are here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any council questions? Deputy Mayor Halter, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
Great. Just thank you for the report, staff. Appreciate that. So with the $385,000 savings with the LED lights being installed, so our shortfall would have been closer to 1.2 million this year had we not done that, correct?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Halter, that's our understanding, correct.
Okay. And the last time, this is a Prop 218 situation, the last time the city went for a potential vote to the public was 30 years ago or was it sooner than that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Halter. So we did go to a vote in 2003. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Halter. So we, we did go to a vote in 2003. That would have raised the assessment $10 per parcel, on average, $10 per parcel annually. There were, I believe the vote was 38% for and 62% against.
And do we have, from that experience, do we have any data on why people are reluctant to vote in an increase on that?
Thank you for that question, Deputy Mayor Halter. We have not studied that or commissioned any kind of study to look at, at the positions of voters on that item. Two-thirds vote that's required under 218 is a high bar to meet. And the message we got in, in 2003 was, was a no. That was, as you recall, that is why we pursued looking at ways to make the line district more solvent and had us going down the track of considering purchase of SCE, which then, then evolved into approval of the option E, which saves that 385,000.
And just for, thank you for that. And just for comparison, how do we compare with other cities that go out for a 218 vote for street lighting? Have other cities been able to pass their, their increases? Do we have any idea?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Halter. I don't have that information tonight. That, that would require some study by staff. If, if you're interested, we could bring that information back and provide it to you.
I believe one of the biggest differences from being here almost 40 years is a high preponderance of people who live on hillsides in the city of Ventura. Even down by the college, there's views to be had. And the lights oftentimes shine right into people's living rooms. So we, we have a give and take there of safety versus enjoyment of the evening sky, you know. So just food for thought. But anyways, thank you for the report.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. You asked my questions. Thank you for your answers.
Okay. No other questions from council? We'll go ahead and recognize public comment. Do we have any public comment cards?
Thank you, Mayor. No public comment on item 20.
Okay. So with that, do we have any final council questions? No? No comments? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I do need a motion to, a motion is required, so.
Move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Okay, go ahead and enter your vote now on item 20. All votes have been entered. Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. We'll move on to formal items. Item number 21, the construction contract agreement PW 25-1183 with Toro Enterprises, Inc. for Waterline East Side to Midtown Interconnection WA 16-1099. And we will have a staff presentation for that. Whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Shade. I'm the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. I am joined tonight by Greg Knudsen on my left, Principal Engineer in Public Works, as well as Ron Herbst, Principal Engineer from Ventura Water. Before you tonight is a request to approve the award of the construction contract for the Waterline East Side to Midtown Interconnection project. The purpose of this project, in conjunction with the recently completed Midtown to West Side Interconnection project, is to enable the city to move water more efficiently from sources of water on the easterly side of the city to areas on the westerly side of the city. Shown in the project location map before you is the alignment of the 24-inch pipeline to be installed along Foothill Road and then down Kimball Road to the intersection with Telegraph Road. As I will share in a moment, there are also minor facility improvements in other Ventura Water facilities. However, they are not shown here for security reasons. Included in this project is the construction of 8,500 feet of 24-inch steel pipe connecting water transmission mains from the intersection of Elizabeth and Foothill Roads to the intersection of Kimball and Telegraph Roads. Additionally, valve improvements will be installed at the Bailey Conditioning Facility and Corbett Tank. On May 20, May 1st, 2025, staff received three bids for this project. The low bid was submitted by Toro Enterprises in the amount of $11.1 million, which is 28% below the engineer's estimate. Within the timeframe required by the bid protest procedures, Sam Hill and Sons submitted a bid protest protesting both Toro Enterprises and Boyce Construction's bids related to listing of subcontractors and material suppliers and bidder project experience. After the review of the information presented, as well as submitted bid documents, I rejected Sam Hill and Sons' protest. Subsequently, a representative from Sam Hill and Sons informed me verbally that they would not be appealing this determination. City Council is requested in the staff report to uphold the decision denying the bid protest submitted. If awarded tonight, it is expected that a notice to proceed would be issued to the contractor in October of this year with a 450-day calendar day contract duration and therefore a completion date in June of 2027. In addition to our typical notifications and social media outreach, we will include coordination with the synagogue and churches near Foothill and Kimball Roads. The proposed funding for these requested actions totals 12.5 million and would be funded entirely out of the CIP Water Fund. The recommendation in the staff report support the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area to maintain and improve the conditions of water infrastructure. The seven actions before you tonight in summary are, find that the previously completed, completed CEQA process is adequate and no additional review is required, uphold the city engineer's decision to deny the bid protest, authorize the city manager to execute a contract and amendments up to the contingency limit shown with Toro Enterprises, authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement and amendments up to the contingency limit shown with Kennedy Jenks for design support during construction, and lastly, authorize the Finance Department to increase appropriations to the Water Capital Fund required to complete the project. With that, we are all available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And with that, I do have Deputy Mayor Halter as a question.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for the report. And it's really nice to see something come in under expectation. So that's pretty exciting. But I do want to ask, given the, all the uncertainty with some things like piping and materials and mechanics, do we see that contingency, the 1.1 million, being enhanced because of the potential unknowns in regards to those cost increases?
Thank you for the question, Deputy Mayor Halter. So the, the price that, that we, that the contractors bid are good for the duration of the contract. They, we don't have within our provisions the ability for them to come back and, and say that their, their costs have increased and therefore that the city needs to cover those. So, so this is a good price. The contingency is, is used for, for unknowns in the field. So subsurface conditions that we're not aware of and changes that need to be made, or, or something that's found out during, during construction that needs to be addressed with a change order.
It could possibly be the, the unknown of price increases too, probably. I'm not sure how the contract's written.
The, the unknowns would be, as an example, would be if, if there is some, some debris underground that wasn't expected, or, or there's other subsurface conditions that weren't expected that, that were not represented within the contract, say. And, and that, and then, then the city would then negotiate a change order for that change.
Since this is a few months out and say prices go up 30% for unknown reasons, what's the mechanism or the process to address that?
So the contractor is on the hook for those increases, I think. And one, one of the, as an example, one of the things that we encounter on the Levis Park Drive project is that Toro, same contractor, I would consider aggressively contacted the city and wanted to address some issues with some submittals to, so they could quickly order the, some of the materials that might have the effect of those price changes. So I think that, that similarly in this contract, I think that Toro would, would probably want to get those, place those orders as quickly as possible, try to mitigate that risk.
That's what I think. Sounds, sounds like you have it all under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Shade, I'm, I'm curious about the bid protest. And hearing you say that you and the contractor that filed the protest made some verbal agreement on the phone, only because every, everything we do here must be written. We reject, we routinely reject bids if there's some fault in the way it's written up. So if we don't have that in writing, is it safe to proceed? Is it safe to know they're not going to come and cause a commotion here?
Thank you, Councilmember. So the, the bid protest, protest did, was received in writing. We did do an analysis of the bid documents that were provided. And, and, and for all three bids, there were some minor clerical errors that we, that, that we saw. We consulted with the City Attorney's Office and we looked at those. We did further research into the Boyce's experience, as an example, to find out what, what the issue was that they, they showed in the bid. There was also one item related to, they, there was a complaint, the bid protest, that, that, that the Boyce, or that Toro should have listed all of their material suppliers. That, that is not required for the public contract code and, and nor our specs. So in, in responding to their bid protests in a written form in the denial, Sam Hill and Sons requested a phone call, the project manager who wrote the bid protest. So in my returning his phone call, he, he wanted to talk through some of his concerns. And after we, we discussed that for about 15 minutes, he said, well, I just want to let you know, we're not going to take this any further. We have a good relationship with the city and, and we're not going to, going to do that. The, in the bid protest procedures, it does require contractors within, within a few days before the item is still, would be heard for award, that, that they notify the city that they're going to appeal the, the, the termination by the city engineer. We never did receive that appeal. And so I, I would say that it's pretty safe to say that Sam Hill and Sons will not take this further.
All right. I'll trust your expertise on this one. Thank you for answering.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, staff, for your presentation. Just, I want to piggyback on Councilmember Campos's question and thank you for some of the details or an explanation on the protest. So this was more, you said, on a more clerical errors? Is that right? For the, and that's why it's being protested?
Yes, there was information in our, I'm sorry, Councilmember Schumacher. In our bid forms, there's requirements to, to list subcontractors and also to list experience for certain items. Those have different, different dollar limits, different, within certain timeframes, they have to have done certain projects. And, and some of that information that Sam Hill and Sons protested, we did not believe was valid. And, and in the case of the experience, all three contractors had some discrepancies in their experience. Based on, on discussion with City Attorney's Office, it was felt that we needed to dig a little bit deeper than what was presented only in writing on paper. And through that research, we found that, that Toro did have experience was required. They didn't list it exactly clearly and appropriately. But we, we, we got that information from the Santa Clarita Water District, one of, one of the listed projects that they had done. They had the experience that was required. And, and the determination that I made, in conjunction with the City Attorney's Office, was that they met the requirements of the contract.
Okay. Thank you. Did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, if I could add to the city engineer's comment. Bid documents often talk about the city may waive irregularities. And one of the recommendations here is that the council waive all minor bid irregularities. And the city engineer did explain, this is perhaps, I guess what could be characterized as an irregularity, but that doesn't make it the lowest responsive bidder.
Okay. I guess my, my line of questioning is more for us establishing that we're not doing any type of cost-cutting measures in a way that kind of establishes higher risk. Because what I'm worried about is we're saving this about $4 million, right, from your estimate? And then when it gets closer to the completion, we get amendments of asking for more money and increasing your budget, which often happens. And so that's what I'm trying to establish, that we know that this budget is, is pretty secure and we trust that this is going to fall in line with that budget. Is that correct?
Yes.
Great. And then, so I guess my final question is, is that the engineer's estimate, was that, was that you, Mr. Shade, or another engineer?
It was, it was provided by our consultant, Kennedy Jenks, who designed the project.
Okay. So I guess I'm trying to understand if the estimate was about $15.6 million, right? And then we're getting bids for 11.1. I'm just curious, where was the overestimation? And why were we off 3 to 4 million dollars?
Mayor and Councilmember Schumacher, the estimate is based upon the engineer's professional opinion of what the costs are going to be. Costs have been very uncertain over the past several years. They took that into account in preparing their estimate. The contractor, the low bid contractor did come in below the estimate, which works out well for us because we've already budgeted for the estimated amount. And we'll move forward with the project. That doesn't mean that they're necessarily cutting corners. It's just, there's a lot of uncertainty in the construction market, especially with materials costs. And we didn't know, the engineer didn't know where tariffs might come into play and such in the contractor's bid. So they did have a higher number than the low bid contractor bid.
Got it. So when you're looking at the estimation and then the bids that came in, it's, it's the line item that we overestimated a little bit because of the, you know, tariffs or anticipated increase of costs was under the line item of construction. Is that correct?
They were in the various, various construction, construction line items. I don't have that in front of me, what, what items varied from the estimate. Oftentimes contractors adjust the balance in their, their bids a little bit anyhow. So it's very tough to predict exactly where those numbers came from.
Understood. Thank you.
If I may, one good indication, or one indication of a good bid is when you have the, the bids clustered. And, and you can see in these bids, we have all three bids within about a million dollars. So I think that is an indication that not, not that we got a wildly low bid, but that we got three really good competitive bids.
I think that's where, I'm sorry, just one more. I think that's where I'm, I'm just a little concerned where, you know, we had three bids about the same area and then we're just a little higher, which is good. I mean, we're getting something underneath our budget, right, that we estimated. I'm just curious as to, you know, where that, where the overestimation happened. And it sounds like it's just because we were anticipating higher costs because of the tariffs. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Couple of quick questions. And your staff report, it states that the pipeline will be constructed during regular construction hours. So what impacts will this have on specifically Foothill, which is kind of like a major thoroughfare?
Mayor, Councilmember Mangone, the Mayor, Councilmember Mangone, the project includes a set of traffic control plans. The work on Foothill, because of the alignment of the pipe within Foothill, is going to preclude the contractor allowing public traffic along much of Foothill during the construction. There'll be detours down Kimball and back on Pettit, or down on Pettit and back on Saticoy, depending upon where the construction is going on at that particular time.
Okay.
After hours, they will backfill or plate the areas under construction and they'll be open to traffic.
So will we remain open after construction hours?
After construction hours, the intent is that the project will remain open both lanes.
And how do we notify surrounding residents of the kind of incoming construction? How's that?
We have a community outreach program, so we'll send postcards and such and do more targeted outreach to items as identified by Mr. Shade for the synagogue churches nearby that have schools and such that are operating during that time.
Okay, okay, thank you. One last question. The condition of the road after project completion, the staff report also states that it will be restored to precondition conditions. What does that mean? Because we've seen trenching done on other city streets where, you know, it almost seems like it's, the street is no longer pre-construction, right? It's almost uneven. What does that mean?
We reconstruct the street per our standard details. The contractor does an evaluation of the streets with us, a video evaluation ahead of the project. And then we have what we call a T-section. So they excavate the trench and back, place the pipe, backfill. And then following construction, they'll widen out by six to 12 inches on each side, place the new pavement with a paving machine typically. And then there are remaining portions of the road that are uneven and we do have to match those.
Sure. Okay. So the whole road will not be repaved?
The whole road will not be repaved as part of the project. It'll just be the trench for the actual waterline construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions from council at the time, we'll go ahead and recognize any public comments.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no public comments received on item 21.
Okay. So back to council for any deliberation and a motion is required.
I'll move to approve staff's recommendations.
I'll second.
Thank you.
We do have a motion and a second on the staff recommendation for item 21. Go ahead and enter your vote now. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes and the motion carries.
Thank you, staff. Much appreciate your work.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to formal item number 22, which is the Water Commission Ad Hoc Subcommittee Updated Review and Ventura Water Pier Program and Membrane Bio-reactor slash Ultraviolet Light Disinfection Project Updates. And we will have staff presentation. All right. Good evening.
Presentation by Water Commission, right?
Yes. I'm going to introduce our water commissioner. Good evening. For the record, I'm Gina Dorrington, General Manager for Ventura Water. And with me is Miles Hogan, our Senior Assistant Attorney. He's here available for any follow-up questions you may have. But we did have a request from the city council back in April to update a ad hoc subcommittee report from the Water Commission. So I will introduce to you your water commissioner, Michael Savage. And Michael, you just give me a next slide when you're ready.
Okay. Let's go ahead and start with the first slide.
Hold on. Slide show.
Somewhere. And once again, my name is Mike Savage. I'm a water resources engineer for over 50 years, consultant doing planning, design, and construction services over the years. My teammate on this is Susan Mulligan, can't be here tonight, but she was also the general manager of Cuyahoga's Water District and brings a lot of experience in constructing projects and seeing them all the way through operations. Together, we brought sort of a different viewpoints to this, allowed us to work together. Next slide. So in early April, the city council asked that we would take a look at this project again and see where things were. In April 28th, the Water Commission reestablished this ad hoc committee and asked Commissioner Mulligan and myself to proceed with that. We had two things for us to look at, to review the updated costs versus what we told you in 2024, and identify the reasons for cost changes. I do want to highlight, though, one of the early discussions about our work suggested there was an audit. This is not an audit, it's an engineering review. So I want to make sure that that's clear, what we've done here. Next slide. What we're showing here are the two major components of the project. On the left side, we have the water pier, which is basically the water supply project. On the right, we have the membrane bio-reactor UV, which is basically a wastewater project. They are completely different types of projects, but they work together in this. As you can see, the water pier project is tracking fairly well compared to what was estimated previous. The real challenge we'll spend more time on today is on the MBR UV. And what we learned is we delved quite deeply into this with staff, the consultants, and for that matter, with the contractor who was engaged with it. Next slide. So looking at overview of the changes, these cost estimates are being refined as the projects are progressing. There's more is learned and what is needed to build and operate them. Time is passing. The cost estimates are increasing because construction inflation remains usually high. So as the projects are moving forward in time, moving out in time, the cost estimates, the midpoint of construction are moving along with that. So depending on where you are in the project, it's going to continue to move as these things are further out. Next slide, please. We wanted to highlight, I know that staff has probably talked to you in the past about the range, the different levels of estimates that you have, official categories. This particular graphic taken from the government accounting office really highlights not only the range of uncertainty as you proceed through the process, but also it anticipates that costs are going to rise. The estimate becomes more certain as project progresses, intends to grow as risks are realized and knowledge increases. We'll be looking at the two projects in the context of this slide a little bit later. We wanted to highlight the concept for you as we move along. Please. So why is this true? Why does this happen? You develop a better understanding of how it will be built, how it's going to operate, any regulatory requirements to start to, if you feel like better to come out of the woodwork that were missed when you're in the early stages of planning and those details hit you. As I was saying, often it starts to take longer. So construction costs are increasing with inflation as you move these projects further out. And there's been some sliding, of course, on these projects over the years, as you well know. Okay, next slide. Just talking about inflation, this is taken from the building cost index by the Engineering News Record. This is where the Bible, we engineers go by, starting to show what's happening so far in 2025. There are increases. And this is only, these projections, of course, don't include some of the other issues that are hitting us with tariffs and others that were mentioned in the previous presentation. Let's move along. So we're going to focus first on the pure water project, taking a look at that. Next slide. So you all know the facilities. We have an advanced water purification facility. There's an outfall that takes the brine from that facility, but also the wastewater for the wastewater treatment plant, which dictated the size of that pipeline. Then the treated water is now pumped to the east over to injection site, where then be recovered for drinking water purposes. So those are the four major components we'll take a look at. Yes. First notch, please. So looking at the outfall pipelines, back in 2024, which is the green, at that point, we were under construction with the project. Now the onsite facilities are complete. The waterside ones are about 95% complete. So the uncertainty, of course, is very small. We're getting down, we know what the numbers are on this particular project. Next one. So the outfall pump station, it was at about 90% design at the time. It's about 60% of construction. So once again, we're reducing the amount of uncertainty on those particular projects and a good handle on where things are going to be. Next one. Now we get into advanced water purification facility. At the time we looked at it, it was back really in the planning stages, has now moved into really preliminary design for these numbers, although they're in the process of doing the 30% design. We don't have those numbers now. We're using, once again, we're still in quite a matter of uncertainty. That's for the things, you as a council worried about risk, you want to know where you are in the process. And that's what this is highlighting for you. Okay, then the groundwater and the pipeline, really nothing's been done on those estimates since the planning stages where we are. But pipelines and wells are the things that the city does more of and has a better handle on what those costs might be. So although they're in the uncertainty ranges, probably not as uncertain maybe as a water purification facility. So that's kind of where we are in the gamut as these projects move and where the risk is on changes of costs. Next slide, please. Okay, looking at these costs, the Ventura Pure Water estimate has increased about 4%. We have the outfall, which is almost done. Land acquisition, not much, or a bit of work has been done, but not finalized. The well's not done. The advanced water purification facility is the big thing looking at, is coming at down the road, the biggest chunk of cost. Next slide, please. So what happened to the cost estimate since we last spoke to you? Actually, the outfall went down in cost as we're getting under construction. There's a little uncertainty, so that bracket of estimate that was put on it has been reduced. We're getting closer to the answer. Land acquisition has actually gone up a couple million from the estimate because they've really, from modeling, from where the wells have to be and where, what lands might have to be purchased, and the value of some of those properties are a little higher than maybe expected originally. No change in the monitoring wells, because we're still at that conceptual phase, but some moderate uncertainty. Right now, the advanced water purification facility has gone up about 12 million. It's in preliminary design with some, you know, moderate uncertainty remaining because we're still working our way through the process. This is the one we have to watch. But the team is on it, certainly with the design teams that we have on that one. Next slide. So the advanced water purification facility project elements that have changed since 2024. The construction date was extended, which probably added about 9 million to that from we looked. There's a lot of detailed information that we tried to distill down, lots of spreadsheets we went through. We looked at how it'll operate. There've been a couple of savings there. One is the outreach building has been eliminated, is not being critical at this time for the project. And then the functionality, size of what it's going to be doing has been reduced after some of these discussions. And so that's down about 2 million on that process. We've had some bumps over the regulatory side, the addition of a charging station is a city requirement, about 4 million. There's some new flood mitigation maps that are coming out, and apparently this is in the floodway. So anticipating there's going to be some potential issues. That hasn't been finalized yet, but anticipating, so no surprises. They're talking about 6 million to respond to that issue in the floodway. Now landscaping has been reduced from what was estimated previously, but it still has to maintain a minimum amount as required by the council commission. It's gone down about a million. So there's some reductions going along and staff is looking at those. In fact, some of these things were identified in 2024 as objectives for the staff to look at. Okay, let's take a look at the MBR UV. Fairly complex issue, as you know. Let's go to the next slide. Now the council, I know, has received presentations, discussion of the fact of moving from the original site down to what's now called the current site in green. It was changed to address construction and cost issues. When it really got into it, as we'll discuss, why that is and what's happened, but it's moved significantly and there's some good reasons for that. So looking at this project, back in January of 2024, in the green, we were back in preliminary design. By August, got to the 60% design, moving up the process, but found out how expensive the project was. And at that point, the staff and the consultants and the contractor looked at alternatives on way to reduce the issues that we had. So we've basically, it's not back up 60% design yet. It's really, when I call it, still back, now back at preliminary design. So we've taken a step back, but I think more importantly, the contractor is engaged at this time in helping that process, I think significantly. We've learned a lot, particularly as we've looked at their detailed sheets, particularly Commissioner Mulligan spent a lot of time on that since that's really her focus area. So that's where we are in the scheme of things. Let's look into the details a bit. This is the big jump. Back in 2024, we had an estimate that was actually done in mid-2023, and it was escalated up for us to use at that time. And probably didn't catch all the inflation in that estimate, being my guess as we've looked at it. So got the contractor on board and he looked at some of the details we'll talk about in the construction and the issues. And it became a bigger problem than anticipated when you really looked at how are you going to do this project in a very confined site with a lot of existing things and keeping it all working? So staff came back to you, and moving over to the pink there, with a new cost estimate, a new site, a new way to handle this. It did reduce some of those costs, not all the way, but you can see what's happened on that. So it's a significant jump, and that's one that is the one we have to be concerned with and see where things go at this point. Okay, next slide. So differences between the engineer's preliminary design estimate and the contractor's 60% design price at the original location. So this is just talking from at the original location and changing the treatment there. There was unusually high escalation for construction inputs at that point, about 58%. Site logistics constraints for about more than a third of the cost increases we saw. And then there's some miscellaneous, and we'll go through each of those now. Next slide. So the 58% was caused by unusually high increases in construction inputs. Materials cost, supply chain during COVID really increased the cost of things coming to the construction area, but suppliers really never adjusted those down afterwards. They didn't, there's no coming down on it. And I'm not sure that was caught when doing the estimates, that it really was moving that fast. There's also labor costs that are going up. Aging workforce, there's fewer people getting into this business. I've noticed that Department of Water Resources, I did some work with them, and they're having a hard time keeping the state water project running. So it's getting more expensive and harder to find people. The other thing that's happening is a lot of competition. The last administration had a program to provide a lot of funding for projects all over the United States. And that means there were a lot of people getting money for Title 16 projects. I have a map somewhere that shows all the pure water projects on the coast that are going on right now. We're all competing for those. And now through some of the additional regulatory drivers, where people are also having to make changes based on regulations, not just the fact that they have money. So that's why we felt like when we looked at the estimates, that's what was driving it. So 36% of the cost by site logistics. It was a tight work area in existing structures, really no space to store anything, had to find other sites to do that. The biggest key seemed to be to support the existing structures during excavation. We were trying to determine why there was so much more concrete in this new estimate. Well, when it came down to it, the contractor explained that he had to reinforce the existing structures so that he could dig pits next to them and not have something like we just saw downtown, actually. So it took a lot more concrete. That was one of the things we had to dig deep into to find out. That also caused them to have to work sequentially. They couldn't work on multiple sites on that site. It had to do the process in sequence to work through these problems, which drops to the bottom, it's made it a longer project. There were a number of utility locations that showed up to some surprise. The other one that was interesting, there was a very large crane that was required to work over the top of the site and move things around. And we were told that it had to be anticipated that would be taken down during high wind events because it was such a tall structure. So there was a lot of things that came into play when it really got down as a contractor, how am I going to do this? And that's why it's different than an engineer using means and other standards. The other thing was, that came up was, it turned out from investigations, there's going to be much more groundwater that had to be pumped, and what had to be pumped had to be treated. So there's additional costs in that area. And of course, tied to all of this is how do you keep that plant operational? How do you connect and reconnect facilities and keep it operational? Really was looking at expanding the cost. Next slide. So the final 6% came up. There were some things that came on the old, as you looked at the original site, there's an existing flow control structure that came up, some larger stormwater pumping infrastructure and quality control testing. At that lower elevation compared to the new site, there would be some tsunami bollards for protection that are required. Turned out there had to be buried ground headworks that was going to have to be demolished. It really wasn't caught the first time. And then some of the compliance with CEQA and a mitigation monitoring plan. Next. So upon learning of the site constraints, staff evaluated So, upon learning of the site constraints, staff evaluated a different location, obviously at that point, working with the contractor in much more detail. They were able to decrease the cost by about 13 million, but it did decrease the full amount of logistics and cost constraints for a couple of reasons. One of which now had to move a process tank that hadn't been planned to be moved, so that's a new structure that was added to the system. There was also additional pump stations required because we had to move water from the old site to the new site, and it's at a higher elevation. So there's some work that had to be done there. And at the new locations, all the costs that ends up are really 53% higher still than what we had in 2024 because of what's been learned at that site. It's our biggest challenge. Next slide. So about the estimate. So the engineer who performed the estimate has expertise and experience in this field. They're well-known. In fact, I think they gave you the high bid on the last item you just talked about. It's the same firm, if I understand correctly. But it was further off than we'd expect in the preliminary design phase, honestly. Why was that? Really, as we said originally, the COVID cost spikes and the fact that costs did not reduce, and they continue to go up are a problem. And the site constraints, contractors are just more skilled in evaluating these situations when you retrofit anywhere in a tight situation. And of course, other, no consolation to you, but other large projects are experiencing the same similar high-cost estimates. We're seeing it all over as a consultants, and obviously, it's creating a real challenge. Next slide before I lose my voice. Okay. Got it, all right. So, looking forward, obviously, we can't know all the cost of a construction's complete, but the uncertainty margins will narrow as we proceed, as we work our way through the system. And I'm sure the staff will continue to update you as we get more detailed in the, particularly going up to the next level of designs on those. I said the advanced water purification facility, injection wells are in early phases, so there's still significant uncertainty. The membrane bioreactor is about halfway through design and relocation, so there's still some moderate uncertainty. But as I said, I think having the contractor engaged at this point is very helpful, moving beyond where we were. Now, we didn't address tariffs in any of this because it's so unknown as to what they're going to be. I tried to do some homework, and nobody knows what the answer is, and maybe on July 9th we will. But the clarity of tariffs really provides a lot of uncertainty, and that's not an engineering issue, it's probably more of a political question than we can address as engineers. The other one, which you had a presentation earlier, is causing a problem, which is not on here, is availability of staff. Now, the immigration is going after some of the construction projects. We're seeing it in the fire areas and others. It's going to be challenging to see how we maintain staff to do our construction projects. Next. We did want to say, when we looked at, we felt the staff has really done their best to reduce costs. They've looked in great detail. We challenged them with a lot of detailed questions, and they came back and dug back and provided a lot of information in that response. The use of CEMAR, the construction manager, really helped find that problem or the challenges at the old site early on, and we didn't find it later. The staff has made some cost reductions by removing non-project elements at the advanced water purification facility, which we actually identified back in 2024. And of course, we always encourage them to look for cost savings as we move along. Jump, okay, jump over this. I'd just like to show the references. I want to highlight how much information has to be reviewed when you go through these processes and how much time we spent going back to staff and challenging them, and they were very smart, and they were very candid, admitted where things were and what happened. Next slide, you had two of two. So that's just really, wanted you to be aware how much goes into this, although it seems maybe superficial in a presentation at this level. There was a lot behind it, and I want to really commend, in particular, Commissioner Mulligan for her detailed work, really into the gory details of the construction. So with that. Are there any questions for me or staff?
Thank you.
Or could I sneak away?
Staff, did you have any additional, or should we have council questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Dr. Centus Palacios. I did want to confirm, last night during the Water Commission presentation and during our rates presentation at Water Commission as well, there was a discussion about whether or not Phase 1B of the project was looked at and reviewed by the commissioner. And to kind of just explain what phases are, Phase 1A is the first phase of the advanced purification facility, the Ventura Water Pier Program. It is laid out in an agreement that we made with our stakeholders on how much diversion is going to come out of the Santa Clara River estuary. So the Phase 1A is a diversion leaving 1.9 million gallons per day discharging into the estuary. That is subject to a five-year monitoring period, and then Phase 1B can be evaluated by the stakeholders and whether or not the city can take the remaining 1.9 million gallons for treatment. So being that the Phase 1B is not a, the projects listed in there would be another well and some more equipment put into the advanced purification facility, they're not active projects. The Water Commission Subcommittee was asked to look at the active projects that were going on and the costs that we're incurring now. The costs in 1B are in the 10-year financial plan that we are putting into the rate study, and the cost to serve a study. And there are some small considerations as we're going through design of the advanced purification facility, leaving room in the design for that further expansion later on. So it's incurred costs that you see right now, but it's not the equipment and construction of Phase 1B. That will come after our five-year monitoring program and the determination of whether we can move forward with Phase 1B. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay. Deputy Mayor Halter, followed by Councilmember Schumacher for questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your report, and thank you, Commissioner, for all your good work. I think it was a very concise and clear report. I know there's a lot that goes beyond what you just told us, as you just said, it's simplified at this point. But I wanted to mention that, more than anything, and you kind of accounted for this in one of the last slides, and that was that time is money. And for me, when you look at projects, you look at the size of the project, the scale of the project, the time period that you, that a reasonable critical path would need to complete that project. And the longer that reasonable period of time gets expanded, the more chance other variables will come into play and can continue that funnel stays pretty much the same for a longer period of time and doesn't become less risk because the variables start overcoming the knowns. The variables such as tariffs, such as labor, such as new laws become overwhelming to the knowns that have been refined as you went through the planning and building process. So I guess a question for me is, is there a scale of this project in a certain period of time to complete this project that is a sweet spot to creating the most cost-effective project for the city?
I'm probably not the right member of this team to actually answer that question. I'm more of a water resources engineer, a conveyance person. Commissioner Mulligan does more treatment, having worked on the site, so I'm more on the sort of the linear side of that. So I really can't answer the question. Maybe staff has a better answer than I do.
I think my understanding of your question, Deputy Mayor, is that we, when will we be more certain?
Yeah.
And Commissioner Savage has done a good job of explaining this cone. To give you some orientation, the pipeline project that you just heard, is it that detailed design-construction line on that cone of certainty, uncertainty, whichever way you want to look at it? So that's when we get the confidence. When we get to that construction period, where the range of percentage in which that price will change gets smaller, and we can come with some, with a more refined certainty. During construction, things come up, as well as we go out and we pothole and we check for things, there are always unknowns, and that's why we carry contingencies on projects to sort of cover that. So when we give cost estimates, we also include those contingencies. And, you know, we're looking at, for example, we're looking at our Ventura Water Pier projects, the outfall pipeline. We're at the end of that, so we're fairly certain that there are no more unexpected costs that can occur.
I might add, though, the concern I have would be, even once you get to construction, if you don't have a certain period of time in mind to get through construction, and you don't have a fixed bid that, like the previous conversation we had, where the city isn't absorbing a lot of the variables that may come into play, it still can go pretty bad pretty quickly without having that predictable amount of time, because time really is huge risk. The longer things go, the more variables that come, get introduced. So I guess I'm looking at, if we knew it took 13 and a half years to build something, okay, or to go from A to Z and get it out of the ground, and for every year beyond that, more variables can very well be introduced, I think that it extends the uncertainty for a long period of time. And that's only my concern, I want to voice that.
And I'd like...
I just want to comment, I mean, we do have CEMAR on this project, so I think that's a big benefit that you have the CEMAR program and identifying what costs and giving you those costs, and they're sharing the rest with you, but I'll let Gina reply better.
So that is the consideration that we brought to council a couple of years ago when we started to go through this process, is doing a construction manager risk. So we have the design process, and we have brought in the construction experts within that design process. So between 30 and 60% design, we start doing the nuts and bolts evaluation and getting a cost estimate between 30 and 60%. That is how we learned the MBR. So we're using that CEMAR tool to try to lower that unpredictability, and we do have a contract for 60% guaranteed maximum price. So the city gets that, and then at that time, we can evaluate whether or not we are able to pay that 60% and go forward with that or using a different method.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Campos.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Can you remind me your name one more time?
Mike Savage.
Savage.
Yeah.
So Mr. Savage, how many years are you on the commission?
This, I'm in my second year now. I moved to town only in 2021 to be near my new grandchild and when I retired.
Beautiful. Thank you for stepping up and taking on this work. So how, and you said your experience in this, how, have you done massive projects like this in the past in your experience?
Not on, I'm not a treatment person. Like I said, I'm conveyance, so I've worked with large pipelines, worked with hydroelectric plants, and that's civil work in that area. But more of my work has been working, particularly the last 20 years, is helping formulate projects. I've been working with three counties, Napa, somewhere we're in, with the boards of supervisors, city council persons, and watering wastewater managers to define a $170 million recycle water program, for which we've completed the first 100 million with 25% federal money on it. So although retired, I still hang on phone calls and the conference calls. They won't quite let me go yet. But those are the kind of projects, mainly in the conveyance types of work and the planning. I don't do much design anymore, it's been many years since I've done that, to be honest.
Got it. So this is a pretty large project, then?
Oh, yes.
That you've, yeah. So this is a lot of, and I'm going to criticize the report because that's what we're tasked to do if we're going to be accepting this report. And the reason why I'm saying that is because this is a lot of numbers that were being shown, and it's not really pieced together in a way that we can all understand in the layman's terms of what really is happening. So, and let me explain what I mean about that. I have a lot of, lot of questions. So if you can be patient with me, I would appreciate it. So I think what I want to, just, my goodness, where are my questions?
And Councilmember Schumacher, just want to let you know, there's no action on this item, per se.
Okay, great. Well, then, I'm just going to criticize the report.
Thank you.
Just for fun. So just, I think that we're trying to, I'm just trying to understand, why, why are we not showing the month-over-month assessment and the analysis of the conditions of what has happened since the beginning of this project?
In this particular report, that really isn't the focus of what we're looking. We're not looking at all the financial aspects of the project, because you're looking at how much has been spent over time. Is that the kind of question you're having?
That, actually, that was, I think, exactly what I asked for when I requested this. I just find it really difficult to piece all of these things together because it's hard for me to see that things are going up and then things are going down. There isn't really, you know, a method for us to connect everything as we are moving forward. And then, there isn't a lot of projections as to where it is. And I hear you, and I think Deputy Mayor said it, that, you know, if we keep kind of analyzing this, we will be looking at more costs potentially. But see, I just, what I'm noticing is that we continue to allow this project to move forward as many of the costs start ballooning, and I don't want to go down three more years and then, I mean, when is the cap for us as a council, for us to stop and say, you know what, let's really understand the numbers? And I think that's what I'm asking for right now. To be clear, I'm not trying to stop this project. I want to just make sure that I am trying to understand for all of the Venturans how this is going to increase our rates. That's what I'm trying to stop, that trying to make sure that we are trying to find a way that doesn't hit our bills so significantly that it's going to be difficult for us to live here. So I think this project, if we're not, we need to start at this council, if this project is unregulated, then the fault doesn't go to the staff, the fault goes to us. And so I think that's what I'm asking for, because again, I, at least, maybe it's just me, I just feel like this is a lot of numbers that's being thrown to us, but there isn't a real big understanding as to how, how big this is affecting us. So let me ask, because I only have a minute left, and then I'll ask more questions later. What is the fear of not having an audit? Why are we not moving forward with this type of scrutiny?
I guess I have to defer to your staff, because that's really not our...
Sure.
...challenge, is what we were asked to do, and getting into the details of how the system within the city operates. So I guess I defer to staff if you have some response to that. I hope.
Yes. Councilmember Schumacher, we listened to the dialogue that we had, and you're right, you had requested there be an audit. Staff recommended that we had, the ad hoc committee had presented a report in January of 2024, and we suggested that that report be updated, and that was supported by the mayor to bring an updated report. So that is what we have. An audit will need to be further defined, you know, through our legal, I'm going to ask Miles if he, do you have any support for that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Schumacher. Just to add a little more clarity to the council's action back in April, the actual motion by council ended up being to approve staff's recommendation. So that discussion was all informal feedback for staff. Staff took that and thought what council wanted was similar to last year when the Water Commission Ad Hoc Committee did a cost review and then reported back to council. And so that's what, why the ad hoc committee was engaged again, to again, look at the costs since the last update for city council. So that was the attempt to meet what the feedback was from council at that time without the specific language of a motion.
I see, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
So I appreciate that, all the work on the report, many beautiful charts and graphs, and it does properly update the previous report. But I think that what this council is asking at this time in this project, and none of us wants to see it fold, we want to help get it moved along, but what we need is the cost to date defined, and then, because projections are always just projections and estimates, we can't know what the total cost will be. But it would help us... But it would help us in our fiscal management, which is our job, to know how much we've spent so far. And this became no more clear to me tonight than the previous presentation when the water engineer said about, about that project, the interconnect from Eastside to Midtown. There, there's a difference, and I believe it was Councilmember Schumacher asked a question about the difference between the contractor's estimate of 15.6 million and the accepted bid of 11.6 million, so $4.5 million. He asked what happens, you know, with that, and the engineer said, well, we've already budgeted for the higher construction amount in our estimate, and so we just save that money. But where does that money go if we're always seeing reports that talk about the high estimate and some aspect of the project is done, and there was $4.5 million left over? Where's the line items? Where's the budget? Where's the spreadsheets? We want to see that. We want to know what the actual cost through June 31st, or pardon me, there isn't that, June 30th of 2025 is, or August 30th, or whatever date we can get it by. That's what we're looking for.
So Councilmember Campos, we have provided some backup slides to the Ad Hoc Commission Subcommittee for those costs to date. They're also going to be in the next item as well. So I do have those available for you. Our membrane bioreactor cost, now this is the wastewater upgrade to replace the failing infrastructure for the wastewater treatment plant and keep the city in compliance. The current estimated cost is a total of $302 million. The actual expenditures to date are $13.8 million. For the Ventura Water Pure program, there are multiple projects within that. We talked about the ocean outfall being near completion. There's still the remaining advanced water purification facility, groundwater wells and the associated land acquisition for those wells. The overall total cost for the program is $373.4 million with actual expenditures at $83.3 million. These all, again, are estimated costs. You saw in the cone of uncertainty where those lie, in the figures and estimation. And so they will be subject to cost. Furthermore, the Water Commission is working through the cost of service study with our rate consultant, Raftellus, and they have been given updates last night. At the Water Commission meeting, they received this update to the prior spring check-in with rates. The impacts, again, are estimations. We will be coming back to the Water Commission on July, or I'm sorry, we will be coming back to you, the council, on July 9th to have a further developed rate model, have a further discussion on policy considerations and moving forward in the cost of service study. So these are, again, estimates where we are at this time for both the water and wastewater rate. And, and this is part of the staff report that was provided to the city council.
Yeah, I was going to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have more questions?
Thank you.
Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you put it on Slide 17? So I want to talk about the uncertainty. So because the way I'm reading this slide, if I look at the, what I'm going to call the orange column, it looks like there is $88 million. Again, that's an estimate because I can't see what it is of cost. Is that correct?
I think it was about 73, but I don't remember exactly.
So, so to answer everybody's question, for the membrane biorec, it's 70, what was the number again?
I think it was 79 million, but I don't remember specifically.
79, so that's the number. It's $79 million. It's right there.
Above 302.
So I have asked numerous times, when staff does these presentations, to give us all of the math. So, but that's the number you're looking for. It's $79 million. That's what the delta is to this project right now, that we don't know on it. Do we have that same chart for the water pure? But do we have the uncertainty?
Well, I don't know that we, I don't know that it's in there, actually.
So that's the number we're missing.
Yeah.
So to Councilmember Campos's point, when we're doing our fiduciary responsibility, we just need all the numbers. And that's what we're missing on Slide 17, is that $79 million number. On the rate studies, which we were provided as part of our staff report, again, I direct this to staff, the compounding, this is not a 55% rate increase over five years, this is a 68.5% increase. This is not a 78% rate increase, it is a 106% rate increase. The people, we need all of the information, and that's not what we're getting here. So I see it here, but this was not the information provided to us in our staff report on it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you go to Slide 4, please? So this is, this is where, as, as a, as a rate payer, I'm concerned with that first bullet point. Cost estimates are being refined as projects are progressing, and more is learned about what is needed to build and operate them. So I, with, though I agree with Deputy Mayor Halter, that time certainly will increase costs, that is, that is the concern that I have right there, that bullet point. Phase 1B projected almost 15 million plus expansion of the well field, which we don't know that cost, we don't have that estimate. Is that a requirement of the consent decree or the NPDES permit, Phase 1B?
Councilmember Mangone, that one, Phase 1B is the requirement to remove all of the discharge out of the estuary. And we have phased that based on multiple stakeholders within the Santa Clara River Estuary.
And it is a requirement of both the consent decree and our NPDES permit.
Of both?
Yes.
Okay. And so we don't, we don't know for sure the future of Phase 1B, and thank you for your email. I know I sent it to you late last year, but it was detailed, I appreciate that information. But, but if we're not for sure that, or we're not certain on the future of really any of the projected costs, I mean, it's right there in the bullet point number one. And in particular, Phase 1B, how can we incorporate those costs into our program estimates? I know that's a difficult question to answer. So the issue that I have here, this is such a complex issue, and to ask direct questions and not just projecting them as concerns. So if you can answer that, how can we incorporate the cost of uncertain project elements? Because that's, in, back to my colleagues' kind of concern as well, is, I agree, we are not, we are not getting the numbers. So I'll, I'll let you.
Councilmember Mangone, we do the CIP program and approve that and put it in our budget with uncertainty costs. They're all estimates, so every project is put in there. For the enterprise fund, for the wastewater and water fund, specifically for the capital improvement program, we take what we know we will get through, and we have a projection. The rate cycle is based on a five-year rate cycle with a 10-year cost projection. So that was Phase 1B costs are out in the further years. We will not ask the rate payer to start paying on a project we're uncertain of until we know that certainty. So this next five-year rate cycle, those 1B costs are not in there. We're not asking them to pay money for something we don't know we're going to do yet.
Okay. Well, I think if we're certainly progressing with this project, and there is so much uncertainties, I don't know if I'd necessarily agree with that. But, so, and I think going back to getting the numbers, I think the term audit is, is thrown around, I don't, to me, it's like, I don't, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, I think we can all agree up here, with the majority of us anyway, that we are not getting, you know, all of the projected or related, related costs incurred with this project, we're just not. We're getting all these estimations, we're getting lots of nice graphs, I understand that. But we don't have, you know, something I would like to see is all project-related costs incurred and projected, including documentation of cost changes, variances, uncertainties, justification of those increases. We're not seeing any of that. So we're consistently just throwing out these cost increases, and it's, that really, I don't, I mean, I don't even understand most of them. So I appreciate the work that the ad hoc did in this, but I, this is not what I was expecting either.
If I may respond just briefly, we're engineers. Not doing audits is really probably not an appropriate role for us to do that, particularly on a volunteer basis. But I understand where you're going with that and looking under the hood a little bit more, so.
No, and I, and I agree, and I certainly wouldn't have that expectation from you as a Water Commission member, but I'm just speaking in general terms, you know, holistically on kind of this whole project, my concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, Mr. Savage, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work you did on this. I greatly appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Before I move into the questions, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge an email I received earlier today, which I'm assuming most of you did, or if not all of you received, which is probably a public document by Mr. Amendola, expressing his objections to this staff report. And his, his core concern was being, being presented tonight was it's not an independent audit or an objective financial review, and rather, it's an internal staff update. And, I mean, I'm hearing what you're all saying, and it doesn't sound like we're getting what we need in regards to the numbers for this. So I, you know, it, it doesn't fulfill, I think, what you originally wanted. So with that, I just wanted, I had just a couple of questions. Most of them were already answered, but I guess my biggest question, well, one of the things I wanted to ask too, it, I, in his email, he wrote that there was a lack of transparency, that actually Commissioner Schallenberger, at the June 23 meeting, said that there was a lack of transparency in the Ventura Water Department. What, what was that about, Ms. Drunten? And I'm assuming you were there, I didn't see the meeting. Yeah, thanks.
Yes, well, I haven't replayed the meeting, but we did do a lot of work last night in a three and a half hour meeting with the Water Commission. The comment, I believe, that he's referring to was that there was so much information that we tried to get out to them as soon as we could. So some of their, the information they received in a supplemental on Friday, and they had only the weekend to go through it before they received it on Monday, or before they went to that on Monday night.
I see. Okay. That's, that's it for right now. I mean, all the other questions were already asked, and they were great questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yeah, I, do we have public comment? Okay. I'll, I'll hold off until after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk Dwee, public comment cards.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three speakers on this item. Speakers will have three minutes. Our first speaker is George Amendola, followed by Bob Alviani and Helen Aloyan. And we'll go ahead and pull your slides up.
Okay, thank you. Hi, good evening, everyone, and thanks for your comments and your questions. I just want to acknowledge Mike Savage and Susan Mulligan, they did put a lot of work into this. And I remember very specifically coming to council and the request from Councilmember Schumacher for an audit, and then concurrence by staff. While it was not formally addressed as a motion, I think there was consensus and guidance from council. Now, fast forward, the very next Water Commission meeting, staff hijacked at that talking point and basically said, we don't think, we don't think council really wants an audit. We think they really just want a review. And that's what the ad hoc subcommittee did. That's what you're seeing tonight. You're seeing a qualitative review. There's not a lot of quantification. And I'm going to fall back on acknowledging Savage and Mulligan for their work. They were led down this path by staff. It's not their fault they didn't deliver what you expected. So one of the things I picked up from last night's meeting in the previous item to the ad hoc report was this chart, and this has to do with the rate study. And you can see what's really going on here. Staff is realigning water supply on the back of the consent decree, justifying all this infrastructure build from what was in 2012, a $55 million project estimate, now up to $800 million. What are they doing? 2031, they're basically going to eliminate water supply from Casitas, the second highest quality source of water we have in the city, the first being Foster Park. But Casitas is outside of the city of Ventura, there's no control over Casitas. So what's that going to do to our costs? Well, they're diversifying their water with recycled water, reclaimed water, they're putting it into the aquifers, injecting, they're going to pull water in from state water interconnect. They're raising the cost of water, and they're not telling you that. So all of these rate studies that you're seeing as a prediction, they're doubling water, they're doubling the cost of water to the consumer. And oh, by the way, they're not really reporting the correct number for the HCF that the average consumer draws. Next slide, please. You can see the water consumption trends have declined. Now they're forecasting it's going to go up. And this is what we're doing. It's really something that's become political, it's the tail wagging the dog. You have not been given the numbers. I know what an audit is, I've been officer of two NASDAQ companies, pre-IPO, post-public offering. This is an audit that is financial, it's about regulatory compliance, and you're not getting those facts. How does this project align with the spend?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Alviani, followed by Helen Aloyan. We're going to finish public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. Go ahead. Please. We're on public comment now. Thank you, Mr. Al.
Thank you for the time this evening. So where's the audit? You didn't really expect that you're going to get an audit, did you? Yes, was it asked for? Yes, it was pretty clear it was asked for, and staff knew that it was asked for. I was at both meetings, Water Commission and this meeting. It was asked for, but our senior city attorney said, no, you don't want to do an audit. In order to back up the Water Commission meeting, he goes ahead and asks the CFO of the city to come in and address the Water Commission and to also tell them, you don't want an audit. We'll just go ahead and give them what we think they need. They have forgotten who's really in charge here. You didn't, you weren't, weren't really expecting an audit. You need one. The questions asked are important. There's no financial information, you can't put those numbers together. There are no RFPs to back up the comparisons as to why they selected what they've selected. So there's, there's no limitation here. $840 million with no limitations, because they still have checks in their checkbook. And they just keep coming and saying, well, we're going to go ahead and get more. And that's the way they go about their business. It's not coming out of a budget because there is no budget. There's no budget here. We're just going to go ahead, and you saw those percentages, 18% increase, 17% increase. Our rates are going to triple. I said this five years ago. Everyone said, oh, no, 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 no. Our rates are going to triple, and it is totally uncontrolled. We have the bullet train of Ventura right here. This is costing more than anything, and the decree is... more than anything, and the decree is not the reason, Deputy Mayor. I know that's a stumbling block for you, but the decree is not your sole reason to not pursue this and get it better defined. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
And our final speaker is Helen Aloyan.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Dr. and Councilmembers. For the record, my name is Helen Aloyan, and my privates are, my comments tonight are made as a private citizen. I came in here after work. I pulled up the agenda. I pulled up the rates, and I realized that the increase is quite dramatic for a person who's paying off student loans and was the breadwinner for their family for quite a while. If I had to pay over $200 in monthly expenses for water, I mean, that is just, that's like a stab in the gut for folks like me and young families who want to make a life here in Ventura. I am just really concerned about the impact that such an increase in rates would have in retaining young families here in our city. And I guess I'm just wondering, is there a line that we won't cross as a city to charge for water? I mean, it is one of those things we need to survive. And I would just, I appreciate the council's comments regarding the financials. When I read the staff report, I also thought that that was going to be kind of the topic more so of the presentation. So I appreciate all of the attention you guys are giving this matter. And I just want to, you know, voice register my concern on this item, the rates. And then, I know there's not a lot of Westsiders who are speaking on this item, but I know, you know, on behalf of the disadvantaged community, they will be disproportionately impacted by such an increase in rates. And I just want to make sure that you guys have the information you need to contemplate these issues and also look out for all the people who want to have families here in Ventura. Thank you.
That concludes public comment on item 22.
Thank you for that. Bringing it back to council for further questions or deliberation.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I need to respond to something, because I think there was a conspiracy theory here possessed by one of the speakers. The reason that there was not an audit is because two engineers, Savage and Mulligan, said, "We're engineers. We don't do audits. It would be inappropriate for us to do that." And we told staff that we wouldn't do it, and we told the city attorney. There's a reason for us not doing that at this point. If you want to look at it, I think you need the right people to do it, and that's something you may want to pursue. But that's not what engineers do, and it would be inappropriate. So that's why we literally refused to do it. So I just want to make sure you understood the situation, take the burden off of staff. They didn't do that to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Mr. Savage. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just, I think I'm just getting concerned, guys. And I'm kind of really just trying to understand when we're asking for transparency, when we're trying to make sure that community members know why things are increasing the way that they are, when community members ask us, how do we explain that? I think that's what we're asking for. And so every time we ask for that transparency, we keep coming back to this place where it makes us frustrated because we're not getting the answers that we need to be able to actually do that. So I think, I want to be clear, I guess, in my request then. I would like a month-over-month analysis, because I think you're coming back next week, or a couple weeks, I think, for the rates, right? A month-over-month or a year-after-year analysis to show, and then showing the explanation of each increase and decrease. I think you have a lot of that analysis here, which is great, but it needs to be connected to how things are moving, right? So that way, we know what the costs are. We know where we put the cap, and then why it keeps increasing above that. And then, you know, it keeps coming back to us for more amendments of approvals of increased costs. And then, because what's happening right now is things are being piecemealed, you know, there's a compounding issue that we're not really truly understanding. So really, just make it whole for us. Make it so that way, it's, we can, you can help us make those conscious decisions. And that's really where I'm really trying to make a very clear direction here, so we can understand how to move forward with this. And like Councilmember Campos said, we're here to help support as much as possible this project. But if we are not given the information that we need for us to move forward, or if the direction that we're giving you, and then you move with something else that you thought was the direction, it would behoove you to reach out to the council member who had requested it, just to find out what exactly I was looking for. And then, at the end of all of that analysis, right, I would love some recommendations. I think what I'm looking for is, you know, why we're going down this road? Why is it the direction that we're choosing? And then the analysis of the other alternatives, other options that may be available to us, and the pros and cons of what that looks like. So again, I think you have all of that here. It's just not in a place where we can fully understand it. So, and I just want to go back to, you know, I present things as well. And we train our epidemiologists to make sure that they present reports that are very clear, especially because there's so many esoteric things here that you may understand that the general public doesn't, right? And so let us make it very clear to the general public as to why their rates are increasing, and why, you know, we, as a council, understand what's happening.
So Councilmember Schumacher, because this is a receive-and-file, no motion was required, I want to give the opportunity for you to make the motion. What I jotted down was that you'd like a month-over-month analysis, year-after-year, showing explanation of increases/decreases.
I'm sorry. Correct. An analysis and recommendations, direction as to why we're going, I'm sorry, the reasons why we're going in this direction, and then alternatives and options, and the analysis of pros and cons between them.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Mayor, can I ask a clarification? I beg your pardon. Can I ask a clarification as to when that time would start, from the beginning of the project, or?
I think that would be helpful. Would that be too much?
Well, it's many, many years in the making. So the question, I think, the question is how quickly you'd want us to return with that information. The longer the time window, the longer the time it will take to return.
I'm going to reach out to my colleagues here and see what timeframe would be feasible for you, or, I mean, how, what would we feel comfortable of seeing as to how we are able to make these decisions?
Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, thank you so much. And just for clarification, are you wanting staff to come back with this information, or would we rather have a third-party audit, so it's unbiased, and it's, nobody's saying staff's, and by the way, I want to let you know, Ms. Dornkin, and I want to let you know, Mr. Hogan, I have so much respect for both of you.
Yes.
You guys work so hard and do such a great job. And I want you to know, we're just trying to do our job up here. This has nothing to do with your integrity or anything like that. So please, don't ever think that. We do have the utmost respect for all of you. But I'm looking at independent, just because for total transparency, nobody come back at staff or the Water Commission and say, "Oh, this is an in-house thing."
I can agree to that.
Okay. So that when you make your motion, I just wanted to...
Yeah. If we can do a third party, then...
Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, just to clarify as well, for, as the mayor had mentioned, this is an information item. And so I think it's reasonable to request information to come back, but to, and I think the council can suggest that it be third-party, but if staff needs to contract for those services, they'd need to come back for that contract authority at a later date.
Okay.
Did the CFO, did you want to have any input?
Hi, I'm Greg Moreland, Chief Financial Officer. If we're, just to clarify a couple of things. So a couple of speakers came up here and said that staff redirected the requirement or the request to the city council. They did not. The Water Commission asked, "Are we really supposed to do an audit? We're engineers. We don't do audits." And the answer to that question, they did ask me to come up, and I did say, "Yeah, you guys aren't qualified to do an audit." The word "audit" is used a lot of times, and what we really are saying is, can we have an investigation into facts about a certain event? So it's not really an audit. It's for you guys to do a review of what happened, what has happened with Ventura Water Pier and where we're going with it. Okay? If we want to do an audit, an audit. And by the way, the Ventura Water Pier program and all of the expenses and all the financials of the Ventura Water Department have been audited and are audited every year. We have a financial audit every year. The purpose of that financial audit is to ensure that our financial statements, there are no material misstatements in them, which there have not been. Another purpose of that audit is to ensure that there's compliance with all of the requirements of the program, whether it's Ventura Water Pier or any other program, that there's compliance with all of the, all of the things in general about that that we're supposed to meet. And our audit last year, our audit that we presented here in February, audited all of those expenses and all of those transactions for the Ventura Water Pier program for the year that ended June 30th of 2024. There were no material misstatements. There were no incidents of non-compliance with anything there. Speakers have come up here and cast a leering gaze at staff and tried to insinuate to you, indeed, they even cast that leering gaze at some of you, and tried to insinuate that there has been some kind of non-transparency with us. That has not occurred. But with regard to the audit, with regard to what we're just now discussing, we need to know what the scope of the audit is going to be, okay? You have tried, Councilmember Schumacher, to say what you want to see. Some of the things that you have said are things that the Financial Department can provide to you, and it doesn't take a lot of time, and it won't take a lot of, it won't cost money. Doing an audit requires a scope, okay? It has to be a clearly-defined scope. We'll have to do an RFP for that audit. I can tell you right now, it'll cost at least $100,000 to do this audit. It'll take probably six weeks just to do the RFP and award a contract. And then, it'll take the auditors probably three to six months to complete their work. So we can have, we can have staff, the Finance Department working with the Water Department, getting your clearly-defined requirements, and coming back to you with a report, or we can move forward with an audit that'll take probably at least seven months to get completed.
Thank you for that. And I think I was gonna, those are some of my things that right away went up, because, well, I understand the request for the audit was made, and now we're here and not having all the information that you'd like to see. I do believe that having, or going forward with an audit, it will take us more time, and it's going to cost yet another, however many thousands of dollars. And if it's information that our CFO can work with our Water Department to put together in a more concise, connected way of what you were requesting, Councilmember Schumacher, I think I would feel more comfortable going that route. And if it's something that's not, that's going to take too much time, then, you know, can we do that, rather than making a motion to go with an audit third-party? Because that's going to take time.
So I'm open to starting with staff for the, I mean, really, we should have done that. I mean, that was my initial request. So, I mean, let's get that done. If, by the time we, and that's what, this is what I'm afraid of, if I get, if we get in a few months, right, and we see the same type of run-around type of report, I will request that audit, if that's, yeah, I'm good with that.
Thank you. Councilmember, I mean, Deputy Mayor Halter, followed by Councilmember Campos?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for this discussion. I want to also make sure, and thank staff, because I got to tell you, I don't necessarily disagree with some of the comments. I do feel that some things are taken out of context. And it's very easy to do so in such a complex, big project. I think, a couple of things right off the bat, is that the report that we just heard, I agree with 100%. It was exactly what I know has transpired in the last five years from building large projects. And that was very clearly stated, from my standpoint. The other thing, though, is going back to the root of this whole conversation, is the fact that the water supplies in Western United States is significantly different today, and will be significantly different tomorrow than it was 20 years ago. So we have to do something. So if we are reallocating water, where the sources of water, then clearly state the reasons why we're doing that, because I believe there's reasons for each one of those. And I think many of us have seen and heard that, whether at this meeting or in closed session. And so I think there's a reason for that, as opposed to some pretense that perhaps something's being hidden from us. I do think that as we do amendments to things, and it's not just $100,000 or $50,000, or like $2 million or $1 million, it would be great to see what pot of money that's coming out of. And I know that money's being tracked. So if I really was that curious, I would go to our Financial Department and ask for that detail. And, but I also, I'm very cognizant and very afraid of making our worst nightmare a reality by not recognizing the impact. There's one thing you say, is that the impact of not doing something could be greater than the impact of prolonging this project. So I'm very aware of that as well. So our job is to balance that. So if we prolong this and ask for an audit, and I think maybe the direction we're going, starting inside, in-house, to try to clearly state these numbers, then we have to be very aware of the missed windows, the time periods that will elapse, that could prevent this project from ever happening. So basically, the reality that has been the rumor out in the, out in the community, because this is the largest project we've ever encumbered, tried to do, those rumors could become a reality by doing exactly what we may do tonight. And that's without being fully aware of what the consequences are, of prolonging some of the numbers. If we could do things in parallel, I would be a lot happier. And that's, in a nutshell, the overall big picture that I see. One final part is that while we're already 14, 15 years down the road, and the project has increased significantly, and I see very clearly why it's increased, and I agree with that. It's painful, just like we don't like our houses increasing the way they are. We don't like interest rates increasing they are. We don't like 100% tariffs, okay? But the reality is, at some point, it is maybe taking a step back and just saying, "What if? What if? What are the other options? Are there any other options?" And I'm not saying a full analysis, but just comparing, in today's reality, what other ways we can satisfy forever the water needs of this community, because if we're without water, our community dies. It's that simple.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
I would like to also, a couple of things. When did the membrane bioreactor get brought into the project?
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Campos. The membrane bioreactor came to a decision when we did our 2021 wastewater master plan. It's the master plan that's done every 10 years. And we had a structural analysis of the facility down at Spinnaker, and it was structurally deficient to point of failure. It is currently, on a routine basis now, those structures are failing and collapsing, and we're shoring them up. It was evaluated at the time in the capital improvement project. We had several repair projects in that facility to keep it going. And an analysis was done of upgrading to the membrane bioreactor process that would allow to, that would ensure compliance with the current NPDS permit and future regulations. It also does add an enhancement to the Ventura Water Pier program. The lifecycle cost was more effective to go with the membrane bioreactor than proceed forward with all of those capital improvement projects. And at that time, it was decided to go forward. Where the community seems melded with the Ventura Water Pier program is that our WIFI alone, our financing, has supported both projects. And it is done with our Ventura Water Pier team. Because it is a multi-year-long project, we did not want to burden Public Works Department with the other projects they needed to get done, and Ventura Water Pier was able to put it into their capacity.
Thank you for that answer.
Thank you for that answer. The reason I brought it up, I think I was still attending council meetings, not on council, when you made that decision. I, I think that because the entire project goes way back years, but if we were to start what your request is at the moment that we added the membrane bioreactor and allow Mr. Morley to provide the cost-to-date figures, and then allow the Water Department to give us the information from that point forward, it may, it may provide this council with a solid understanding of where we stand cost-wise and what's ahead. And so I would ask if we could kind of amend the motion to be that for now.
Can I answer, Mayor? Um, I, I would like maybe the past five years, because it sounds like it was 2021 you said?
That was the determination of the membrane bioreactor. Um, I think a more appropriate point in time is the environmental impact report and the adoption of that through council. And what, that evaluated the alternatives of the Ventura Water Pier program, what we were going to do with this discharge and, and how we were going to, um, put it into water supply. So I think it's the adoption of that 2019 environmental impact report and how that has progressed through time.
That works for me.
Thank you. Did you have more questions? Uh, Councilmember Duran? Oh, I'm sorry. Miles had a question or did, okay. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Duran. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I want to defend staff, and I would really want to focus in on what, uh, Mr. Morley said. We, we don't want an audit. That, that is not going to tell us anything. The cost of this project is the cost of this project. What we need to know is the rates and what it will cost. If we can put slides 17 back up, I believe we're going to get a rate study on July 9th that tells us, looking at this, what the cost is at 302 million, which I believe was highlighted in the staff report, based on the 302 million dollars. So, and we've got to decide as a council, does that cost break the perporeal back? Yes or no? But then the next question is, if we add another 79 million dollars in costs, what does that do to the rates? And does that break? Doing an audit isn't going to tell it. We, we're, we're here. I mean, there's no, I mean, it, it'll tell us how we got to 302 million dollars, but it's not going to tell us, like, what to do with that information. That's what we have to do. Then what we need is the rates. So I'm, I'm not quite sure what we're trying to do with an audit that's going to tell us, you know, and, and they're going to provide backup. There was an extensive list, and as Mr. Morley said, it's been audited by an auditing firm, and they're going to say, here's every decision that the council made, here's the cost, here's the vote, and it was done. I mean, I don't, I don't know what we're trying to do. I think we're trying to figure out, how do we move this forward? And I think what we really want is a rate study, not an audit, because we can get the audit, it's going to tell us the project cost 302 million dollars, and here's how it got there. The question that we need to ask as this body is, at that rate, can we ask our residents to pay it? Uh, the, the cost is, it's already here. It's, it's there. There's this 79 million dollars, uh, in, in potential uncertainty, you know, and I think that's the question I want to know is, what's the rate at 302 million? What's the rate at 381 million? That's the question we need to ask, not how did we, we get, we're already here. We're, you know, so, and, you know, we can go back the last five years of audits, and Mr. Morley will point it out to you exactly how we got there. So that, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, uh, it's kind of exactly where I'm at as well. You know, I understand what Councilmember Schumacher was trying to get, do just some clarity on where to go. I get that, and I'm, I was all for that as well. But, you know, when we're looking at what the rate studies are going to be, what's, you know, Deputy Mayor Holter, he said, the longer we wait, the higher the price goes up. Get it, but get that. But if we're looking at tripling our rates, I mean, we, I mean, do, do we even want to go forward with this project, right? That's the question. So I think when we get that rate study, we'll have, we'll be able to determine, is this really what we want to do or is it not what we want to do? So I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilmember, Councilmember McReynolds in regards to when we see that, we'll have better direction and clarity on where to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher?
Aren't we getting a rate study in the next?
Yeah, July 9th.
So I, why wouldn't we be able to do both? Because we're getting the rate study, and then what I'm trying to look for is why, um, I hear you, and I, I get it. Um, and I think the reason why we or I were, were looking for this analysis is because what is it? I'm not fully confident that we're making the right decision if we keep seeing this cost of this project ballooning in, like, exponentially. And I think that's where my curiosity is, 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 um, you know, trying to understand why and, and what is driving those costs? Because every time we ask for it, there isn't this, like, clear clarity of what exactly is happening with this project. So that's why I am looking for this analysis.
Okay. So, um, Councilmember McReynolds?
I, I think what you're asking for is that 79 million dollars. And what happens if that becomes the reality? It, it's not an audit, we already know we're at 302 million, and, and an audit's just going to tell us how we got there, and they'll back it up with 25 staff reports and, you know, multiple presentations that the Water Department made, you know, that this body approved. That, the question is, what is the rate at 302 million dollars? What is the rate at 381 million dollars? And again, that's just on one, that's not the Water Pier project, that's just the MVR, you know, part of it. I think that's what we want to know. And is it worth going forward if there is another seven, in, in just this one case, another 79 million dollars? And what does that do to the rates? That's the question we want to figure out.
So did you want to amend your motion? I don't have a second on the motion, but I know that you had made that motion.
I think, I mean, honestly, I think we could do both, because it just feels like we're doing, uh, we're getting the rate study anyway, which doesn't prevent us from asking staff to provide us with another analysis that shows us how we got here. I think that's just where the, um, for me, again, I'm not feeling confident that I'm being shown everything that we need to see in making those decisions once we get the rate study. So whether, I mean, we're getting the rate study anyway, right? We're looking through it, we're going to do it, and I would like to see this analysis. So my motion stands.
And I second it.
Uh, Councilmember McReynolds?
I, I just want to clarify, I mean, that's fine if, I mean, we'll, we'll do the math how we get there. But I want to be clear, on July 9th, you are not going to get a rate study that tells you what that extra 79 million dollars is going to do.
Are you asking me?
No, I'm telling you, we're not going to get a rate study that tells us, that's the real question that we have to answer on it. We're going to get a rate study on July 9th that tells us what the 302 million dollar project, on, again, just on the MVR cost.
So you want me to amend my motion to add what you're saying about the rate study?
I, I think the question you want to know is what does the, what is the rates at a 381 million dollars?
In addition to what I'm looking for?
Yeah, I think, because that's the, that's the question you're really asking, I think.
I understand now. Yeah, I can accept that.
Okay. And, did you have any?
I, I don't think we're being clear to staff in any form or fashion, uh, on it. They're going to present a rate study on July 9th.
Right.
For whatever the cost is. And Raftellus has, you know, spent months putting it together and everything like that. And that's, that's a point in time as of today. We want to know projection out. So we need a, a study that's going to project out if costs continue to increase at a potential risk here, what does the rate look like? And they're not going to have that on the 9th. It's, it's, it's going to take them, I mean, I defer to, that's a giant math problem that probably takes them months to calculate out, so.
Mr. Hogan, I know you've been wanting to say something, so maybe you can help here.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor and councilmembers. Um, I'll, I'll answer your question. I just want to maybe briefly set expectations for what's, uh, coming on, on July 9th and where, uh, the city's at in the rate process. Uh, so it, it does take several months to update what are called the financial plans, um, and that process is just about done and was presented to Water Commission last night. Um, and what then, uh, staff was able to provide to you is the expected percentage increases, uh, that are needed in future years to be able to fund those costs, um, required, uh, for both the water and wastewater enterprise funds. Additionally, um, staff and Raftellus have received feedback, uh, from the Water Commission on certain, um, inputs for potential changes to the rate study. So what they plan to present is similar to what was presented to Water Commission last night, where it's, um, those presented percentages, uh, so far, and you saw them on the screen earlier, and then, um, potential areas to change, uh, the water and wastewater rate structure. Um, and then based on City Council's feedback, Raftellus would then go through the exercise of actually, um, coming up with the, uh, the specific rates for each customer class. Um, and it's expected that, uh, that would return to council in September. And so to answer your question, um, what I'm hearing is a desire to add, um, an analysis that includes an additional 79 million dollar cost to the MVR project, um, as an additional option that City Council wants to see, uh, presented. Um, so I think, uh, staff can put that request to Raftellus and try to have that ready, um, for the July 9th, um, presentation.
Just to be clear, though, the 79 million is only on the MVR project?
Only on the MVR project.
What is the uncertainty, which is not part of this presentation, on the Water Pier project?
Um, we, uh, staff could ask for that uncertainty on the Ventura Water Pier project and then incorporate, um, the upper limit of that as well, if that's what, uh, City Council desires.
Because I think that's referenced in slide 10, if we go back to 10. So we're way on the left of that scale. So that uncertainty is going to be, I mean, it's, it's a guess, it's an educated guess, but it's a guess.
Yeah. So, and, and those percentages provide an alternate scenario that includes the uncertainty for both MVR and the Ventura Water Pier program?
That's, at the end of the day, I think, what the council
That's what we need.
Really wants to know.
Yeah.
So, sorry, may I?
Sure.
So I think you're at, like, the latter part of that journey, and I'm still trying to figure out if, because you're accepting that we are, I mean, we're now, what, 800 million dollars? When we were at six about a few months ago? So I'm trying to figure out that part of the journey as to where those costs are and why it keeps increasing. So that's the type of analysis that I'm looking for. Now, if that's what we're saying, I can agree to that.
And I, and I think that is what we're saying in addition to the uncertainty for the Ventura Water Pier. And MVR.
My second person is saying no.
I, I think it's different. I think what, what Councilmember Schumacher is asking for, and I agree with him, is the up until this moment in time, how much have we spent already on this project, Ventura Water Pier, membrane bioreactor, which is attached to it? From when it began in 2019 till now, what have been the process? What have we accomplished that is already built? And what is the cost being, which Mr. Morley can provide? That's what we're asking for. He backed off the audit, so Mr. McReynolds, you should be satisfied with that. But we still want to see a little bit better. It's, it's not all there, I don't believe. I think we need, I really would like to see a spreadsheet, because then we would know everything that's in it. Because every council meeting, we have more things brought to us, increase this contract.
Right.
Amend this contract. Those are what we're looking for, the total cost of the project, I believe.
I'm going to ask the staff, do you understand what I'm trying to, what we're trying to figure out? Or do you, do you have some clarity?
I think what you, I think there's a lot of background information, um, for how we got here and, and the process that we took that's missing, that, um, we have not reiterated over and over again, we've progressed through. These are large, multi-year projects, and you are seeing the action that happens in the design phase. In a normal project, you get to the bid phase where that all this, all of these motions and all of these actions that we're bringing to you and these changes in costs happen usually at the desk level. But we bringing them to you because these are large, multi-year, and we're trying to keep you step to step. So I think what we need to do is lay out the map that we have traveled on, and, you know, be more detailed in the cost. It is extensive. Um, it, it, there is a lot, and it took the commission a long time to go through just a year change, and they had done this report prior. It is information that is there, and I hesitate to say I can get it to you by July 9th, but I want to remind the council that we have bond obligations, we have grant funding at stake, and we are, we are needing to go into construction on some of these projects by the end of summer in order to meet those obligations. And so I am trying to think of how to best do this efficiently to still make those deadlines for you.
So may I continue for a moment, Mayor?
Sure.
So, I, I don't think that Councilmember Schumacher and I wanted to see this by July 9th. July 9th came up because we spoke about the rate study. And, um, our Assistant City Attorney expressed to us that Raftellus will be coming back in September, right? If we give direction in July. So why not have this ready as much as is feasible in September, along with Raftellus coming back?
We are, this evening, we're asking for approval to move forward on the project with the owner-controlled insurance program, and that creates a, a chain of events in getting the project moved along. On July 9th, we'll be bringing, uh, consideration to award the, uh, construction manager at risk for the advanced purification program, and we will be asking for a, uh, early works package on the membrane bioreactor. And so if this information is going to, um, if those items won't be considered without this supplemental information, we are going to run into a, a timeline issue.
So Councilmember Schumacher, is it okay if they bring back what we're asking for in September?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holter?
Just one, uh, I have to just say, one quick comment is that, you know, th, this is a direction decided 15 years ago, 14, 15 years ago, that, uh, would give us the chance of having the water we need, uh, for the future and for a prosperous city, knowing all the variables, that many of which not only have come through fruition, but they have come very aggressively through fruition and will continue to be so as far as the limitations of where water's coming from. So it's not a matter of, uh, just, yes, are our rates going to double, triple, or worse? Uh, and whether or not, uh, our citizens can absorb that? It's about, do we have enough water to simply even survive and have our businesses here and have the housing that we need? Or are we just going to be, um, or are we just going to be, uh, a city that's withering away? And I think there is a reason why we're looking for other water sources. It's not because we want to do a 400, 600, or 800 million dollar project. That's not at all in anybody's pipe dream that I know of, but it's because we need water and we need to have sustainable water. And so it's, it's much, I, I see thumb pointing down back there, but I got to tell you, um, there's a lot more to it. It's not just about, we're not doing this for the fun of it. It's not just about, we're not doing this for the fun of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, and we do have a motion and a second on the floor.
Sure, understood. Just a couple of quick comments.
Yes.
To staff in particular, I really don't want you guys to confuse my frustration with me thinking something nefarious is going on here, because that's not what I'm implying. I think, this is a conversation that I think that needs to be had every time, you know, this project comes up now. And I appreciate my colleagues for putting in that effort. But my frustration comes from the uncertainty that's kind of, I mean, we've been discussing it for the last 10 minutes, the uncertainties with this project and how that's not, it's not clearly been represented, right? And us, we have a fiduciary responsibility for the ratepayers. And so we don't really fully understand the impacts that will have on the ratepayers. Ultimately, that's what we're talking about, is the impacts on the ratepayers. As, and certainly, I think it's been clear, maybe we need to kind of be more, as clear as possible with you guys. But I think moving forward, I think we can all understand now that we're, I think we're all on the same page with our concerns. And hopefully you guys can, you know, kind of be ahead of this. So we're not consistently talking about information that we don't have and that all seven of us can agree that we need. And I think, I think we can get to that point, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hogan?
Mayor, if I could just read back what I think the motion includes, just so we make sure we're all on the same page. So the first part to be done by staff, both finance and Ventura Water staff, is the month-over-month analysis and year-over-year showing explanation of increases and decreases, going back to when the EIR was approved in 2019. Why the city generally is going down this road for both projects. And then the alternatives and pros and cons between them. And the costs spent to date. So that's the first part. And then the second item is for the rates to show in an alternate scenario that includes the uncertainty for both the MBR program and the Ventura Water Pure program at the upper limit for potential rate impacts.
Yes. Councilmember McReynolds?
I just, the second part, does that need to be a motion as part of it? Or is this something that you can do as part of the rate study?
I thought it was going to be all part of that one motion to include that in the rate study.
Well, that's going to be in two weeks, right? I'm just questioning, do we need to do the second part? I want to get Councilmember Schumacher's concerns addressed in the first part. I'm just curious, do we need the second part? Or is that just something that can be done as part of the?
As part of the rate study?
Yeah.
And Mayor, if I may, it sounds like that was, the second piece was a friendly amendment made by Councilmember McReynolds.
I'm just curious if we need it.
Doesn't sound like Councilmember Compost accepted that as the second or of the motion.
I'm good with it.
Okay. I'm good with what stands before the rate study issues, because I think they're coming anyway. Is that all right with you?
That's fine.
Okay, so the first part, I said, is the motion. But then the feedback to staff is to include that in what is brought forward in the rate discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
And Mayor, could we make sure with Mr. Morley that he can also bring that by September?
Bring what by September?
Yes, I'm Greg Morley, Chief Financial Officer. There was suggestion that it would take weeks or months to get this financial information. We can deliver this in days or weeks. So yes, absolutely by September. I understand that there's going to be a pretty long break with the City Council starting after July 9th, so we'll certainly be ready by then.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, staff. Thank you, council. We have a motion and a second.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So just to repeat, the final motion I have is to direct staff to return by September with a month-over-month, year-over-year cost analysis, beginning with the 2019 adoption of the EIR report, including the cost to date.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
You can go ahead and enter your vote now. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to our last item, item number 23, which is the owner-controlled insurance program costs for Ventura Water Pure program and membrane bioreactor ultraviolet light disinfection project.
All right, again, good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios, Deputy Mayor Halter, council members, the City of Ventura. For the record, I am Gina Dorrington, the General Manager of Ventura Water Pure. With me here this evening is Lisa Oland, our Risk Manager from Human Resources, and our Senior Assistant City Attorney, Miles Hogan. Available online is also Pam Mitchell. She is with Anon Risk Insurance, and she is here for any technical questions on the insurance program. So, we are bringing back the owner-controlled insurance program. We came here back in May to discuss purchasing an umbrella package of insurance over our large capital improvement program projects. And there were some requests. There was the updated report from the AdHoc Committee, which you just heard, and some questions regarding costs to date and what this impact is onto the rates. And so I will go over those and then bring back to what the owner-controlled insurance program is and what it does for this program and the recommendation for this evening. So you've seen this slide. This is our best cost estimate to date for the membrane bioreactor. The membrane bioreactor project is the project to replace the aging infrastructure of the city's wastewater treatment facility. This project will help keep the city in compliance with its discharge requirements and well as in future discharge requirements. And at current estimate, it's $302 million to complete the project, with our actual expenditures at $13.8 million. A separate suite of projects is through the Ventura Water Pure program. That contains several projects. That's the ocean outfall, the advanced purification facility, the groundwater, and then the land to purchase for those groundwater wells. The ocean outfall is near completion, and this is a project that will not be covered underneath this owner-controlled insurance program. But the cost to date, the estimated cost to date for the remaining projects is $373.4 million with actual expenditures for all the projects at $83.3 million. Just to note, the costs of the owner-insured controlled program that you're going to see this evening is included in these estimates. Insurance is included, whether we do it through a traditional contractor-held insurance program or the owner-insured controlled program. So these, the cost for the owner-controlled program you're going to see tonight is covered in this overall cost estimate. There were a lot of concerns about what the rate impact is going to be. And the city is going through a cost-of-study service, study, with a five-year rate cycle to be projected, and then a 10-year financial plan. This is a current look at what the Water Commission saw last night. And you will be receiving the same information they did on what impacted and what caused, what is driving these rates. And you'll be able to provide some input and feedback to our rate consultant and staff on how to perhaps adjust these. So these are subject to adjustment further down. So the owner-controlled insurance program is one of the tools that we use to try to keep costs as low as possible. Every time we bring these construction projects to the City Council, we are reminded that we do need to do our diligence in looking for ways to cut costs. So this is a concept that we brought to the council in 2023. It was vetted and approved. And we had prepared a package for council in May of 2025 to cover the large projects going forward. So looking at what typical insurance involves for construction projects for the city, each individual project would be bid out, and each bid item would include an insurance line item. And that insurance is the coverage for each individual project. And each individual project is subject to a bid markup from the contractor to cover their administrative costs for securing that insurance. Subcontractors as well are subject to carry the same limits as the prime contractor. So it does limit the availability for smaller contractors, local contractors, to bid on these projects because of the high-rate insurance that they need to carry. So under the owner-controlled insurance program, the city pays a broker of record, and that broker of record goes out and provides uniform, secures a package that provides uniform coverage for over all the projects within that package. It allows for efficiency in how we negotiate a bulk price, and we get higher coverage limits, and subcontractors are then covered underneath this limit. So it offers a little bit more availability of work to some local contractors. One thing that is a significant bonus is that in this program, there is a safety program written into it. Lisa will go into a little more explanation on that, but it does provide reduced losses in the future. So I will let Lisa go into a little bit more of the benefits of going with the owner-controlled insurance program.
All right, thank you, Gina. So as Ms. Dorrington mentioned, the cost of insurance is borne by the city, whether we have the contractor provide the insurance or whether we do a program such as this owner-controlled insurance program. It is a large expense, for sure. Insurance is costly. But it is a cost that we will be paying either way. It is not an additional expense. We are not asking for an additional expense that's included in the estimates. What I wanted to go over here with you tonight is kind of the difference between whether we go with the owner-controlled insurance program versus contractor-provided insurance. Builders' risk insurance, that covers the property. Think of it as a property policy while the project is being built. Both are, no matter who procures the policy, will be getting construction value at a replacement cost. Where the difference starts to come in is on the liability portion of the program. The city would be afforded $100 million in limits versus $50 million if we go with a contractor-provided policy. The reason for that is the contractor simply probably cannot procure $100 million in limits where we can when we're talking about the multi-project cost and what's available on the marketplace at a reasonable cost. Workers' compensation benefits, again, those are statutory. There's no difference there, other than the cost. Pollution liability, the city would enjoy $50 million worth of coverage rather than $20 million worth of coverage if it were provided by the contractor in the event of a pollution claim. And professional liability, that covers engineering, design, that sort of thing. The city would have $20 million of coverage available versus $10 million with a contractor-provided plan. The global safety program that Ms. Dorrington mentioned is really key here, not in just ensuring the workers' safety, but also in helping to reduce the costs. So this is a loss-sensitive program, meaning that there's an estimate as to what we think our losses will be. And that was developed with the help of Aon, the broker. If we perform better than that, safer than that, fewer claims than that, then the city will actually be able to get a reduction in the amount that we pay out in premium dollars and in losses. That can be a very big savings to have that global safety program versus a, you know, multiple policies over multiple projects. And maybe some contractors run a good safety program and some do not. That's really something that we don't get to play a big part in. So we're talking about greater coverage, a safer workplace, and less cost overall by going with the owner-controlled insurance program. And I just think that's a better way to spend the city's dollars.
So the cost for this program is $14,993,389. This is the estimated cost that we had already been carrying within the membrane bioreactor and the advanced purification facility for insurance coverage. It represents approximately 2.6% of the total project costs that are recovered underneath this. And we estimate a cost savings of at least $1 million. To note that we are going to be avoiding that markup with each individual project going forward with the program. This is subject to audit and project adjustments. Lisa talked about whether or not sometimes it could be better and we might get a reduction. Also, it's the same as any other traditional insurance. So the contractor would experience perhaps a change in adjustments, and he would pass that cost on to us, and we would come back with a change. So if there are any changes, we'd be coming back to council to discuss and ask for approval for those changes. I do, I mentioned before in the last item, and I do want to remind the council that a decision on whether or not to move forward is critical this evening, because we do need to inform our contractors which type of insurance to go out and secure. And we need to have that insurance bound by the end of July of this year. This is to avoid the critical time delays in construction that I mentioned, to make sure that we continue to achieve the grant obligations that we have for the projects. And overall, these projects and the recommendation to support the owner-controlled insurance program does support your strategic priorities in the area of infrastructure with a focus to continue to maintain and improve the conditions of roads, water, storm drains, and parts. Our recommendation this evening is to authorize the city manager or designate and bind the insurance policies for the owner-controlled insurance program. For the Ventura Water Pure program, remaining projects, and the membrane bioreactor projects, in an amount not to exceed at this time of $14,933,389. And we have availability for questions.
Thank you, staff. Council, any questions? Deputy Mayor Halter, followed by Councilmember Compost.
Thank you, staff, for the report. Just want to clarify, this is only in regards to the bioreactor portion of this project?
Deputy Mayor, it is not only the MBR, the membrane bioreactor or the wastewater project, but it's the remaining projects under Ventura Water Pure. So it would be the advanced purification facility and the groundwater wells that we need to construct.
Okay. And, let's see, it sounds like we get higher coverage going this route. It sounds like, although I think a company's been selected already? A contractor?
A contractor or an insurance?
Well, the contractor is already selected for building the bioreactor.
Broker of record.
Right?
We have a broker of record, but are you talking about the contractor for the projects?
Correct.
To build them?
Yeah.
So, let me, I need my visual. All right. So for the membrane bioreactor, we are nearing a 60% guaranteed maximum price with our construction manager at risk. We have selected that as PCL. They were selected prior. We are coming to council with a selection for the construction manager at risk for the advanced purification facility. And we not, we have not awarded a contract for the groundwater wells yet.
And just clarifying that, so better insurance, it's for the bioreactor and the remaining aspects of Water Pure. And what is enticing as a small business owner is that it allows you to possibly select companies that are local, that may be in that mid-range, that's still very capable of providing this service, but maybe not capable of securing such high limits. So that really excites me, so I appreciate you looking at this option. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campos?
Thank you, Mayor. I realize that I, in fact, we all had a lot of questions when you came with this before. I talked to some people in the unions and I did some other research, so I just want to say I will support this tonight. It's a good project.
Thank you. Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your presentation. Just a couple of questions. This insurance is required for us to move forward with this project, correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Schumacher. Insurance in general is required.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And then without the owner-controlled insurance, it would cost more?
It likely would, yes. That's the whole design of these programs. When you buy an owner-controlled insurance program, you get the economy of scale. So think of it as, in a way, buying in bulk, and you get the advantage of that pricing because it covers multiple projects. And because of the safety and loss control programs that are added to that and included in that, hopefully our losses will be less, so we will be paying fewer deductibles and so on.
Thank you.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you go to Slide 3? So just a quick question. So the, this is the membrane bioreactor. It's a $302 million project, and you mentioned that the insurance is approximately 2% of the total cost of the project. Is that?
It's the cost for the owner insurance program, the umbrella, which includes the membrane bioreactor, the advanced purification, the groundwater, it's 2.6% of those projects together.
So my question is, if we see the, potentially, the $79 million uncertainty factor, again, we're just talking about the membrane bioreactor, then we would see an increase in cost, assuming the full $79 million, of 2.6% of that $79 million added to this program?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember McReynolds. The short answer is yes, and so would a contractor. So if a contractor were provided insurance and the costs went up over time, they also would be charged increased premium, which would get passed along to us.
And my point of the question is, just so we understand, again, relating to the uncertainty, so if the cost of this project, of the membrane bioreactor goes up $79 million, which is a potential, that's been identified, the cost of this program, just on the membrane bioreactor, goes up $2 million. So is that 2.6? So just so we understand, the $15 million is based on the project today on it? And I, every company that I've worked for in the private sector offers RAP insurance, so this is the appropriate thing to do. I just want to understand that, you know, the $15 million is not potentially the total cost of this program. Thank you.
Thank you. And not seeing any other questions, I'll go ahead and go to public comment if we have any.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two speakers on item 23, George Amidola and Heather May. And speakers will have three minutes.
Hello again and good evening. So here we are again. We had this item come up about 1:00 a.m. in May, forget the meeting date, but what's changed? I just see more risk for the city. And did the price of insurance go up since May, or is it the same? I'm unsure about that. I don't have a reference point in front of me. Slide 9 was very revealing. I don't think we saw Slide 9 at the last presentation. Could you bring that up, Michael, if you can? Thank you. I'm curious what this double check is for risk coverage. I didn't really have a clarity understanding of that at the very last column, the very last row, column 2, maybe. I don't know what that means, the double check. So what happens if the city insurance risk rating, if a contractor has a lot of claims? What happens to the city's risk rating if there's a lot of claims? We hope there will be less claims, that's what's been stated, but what happens if there's more claims? Does that affect the city's overall risk rating? Insurance, as I understand it, is a risk transfer, but here, the city is absorbing the risk for third-party contractors. While they're binding the insurance or proposing to bind the insurance, they're absorbing the risk for the contractor, all to save potentially $1 million. But what if our insurance policy doesn't cover that risk? Then are we going to absorb more than $1 million worth of savings? I don't know what that number is, especially when there's limitations on the policy, and maybe there's not as much limitations on somebody else's claims against the city or the contractor, which we're underwriting. It sounds good, I just don't know the answer. Going to Councilmember McReynolds' question, what is the 2.6%? Well, 2.6%, the way I calculate it, is close to $574 million. Where's that number come from? I don't understand the 2.6% number, and I don't know if that's been made clear on Slide 10. So I guess the question before you tonight is, is this the right way to go? From where I sit, as a small business owner, and also as a consultant for cybersecurity and helping businesses determine some of their risk and risk mitigation, as it relates to their business and also dealing with insurance, I'm wondering why the city would absorb a greater amount of risk for just a million-dollar savings. It doesn't make much sense to me. I'm just a layman. Thanks very much.
And our final speaker, Heather May.
Good evening. I actually wanted to remind everyone that just four short years ago in 2021, our rates were increased a whopping 42% over five years. This July, we're getting our fifth rate increase to pay for the, at that time, $350, approximately, million-dollar project, and now the rates are incredibly high and absolutely unaffordable for most rate payers. And so I applaud all of the questions and the comments that were raised by City Council tonight, and I hope with that in mind, they will, that City Council will not move forward with any more requests in reference to Ventura Water Pier until those questions are answered, because this is the difference between being able to afford to live in Ventura, and this is the final nail in their coffin, and it is no longer affordable to live here. 42% based on $350 million, and now you're going for an even more incredible rate increase. So I hope that you will keep that in mind when you make your decision tonight. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Bringing it back to council deliberations, and a motion is required for this item. Any questions, further questions or comments? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Duran?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions, and thank you so much for your report, but would the city be insuring jobs? I mean, when they take on the insurance or the liability, it's on the job site, and we're not going to be there every moment of the, while the constructions go, while everything's happening. Will we have somebody supervising that? Are we going to be aware of everything that's going on?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Duran. Part of the safety program is to have a safety manager on site, not seven days a week, but on a very regular basis to ensure that OSHA requirements are being met and that the crews are working safely.
And once the project is complete, what liability do we have after that, by taking on that liability?
Right. So the liabilities that we continue after the project is complete, potentially, are the workers' compensation losses, because statutorily, those are unlimited if we are not able to settle them out. So that is a possibility. However, there is a cap with this program, so I think in the staff report, there is a table that shows you, I'm just going to look if you don't mind. I don't want to rely on memory.
Oh, yeah.
On page 5 of the staff report, when you go about halfway down, there's a lost deductible fund.
Yes.
And that is about 85% of the maximum amount of money that we, that we, the city, could be liable for with this program. So a little over $5 million is the most that we would pay out in claims, deductibles, that sort of thing. We don't expect to reach anywhere near that number. This is a very conservative estimate, but if the worst-case scenario were to happen and there were unprecedented losses at the site, we, our liabilities would be capped.
Thank you. And do the claims against the policy, does that affect our credit rating?
Potentially, I guess, in the long run, if it was something extreme, it could. Do we have Pam from Aon on the line? She is our broker, and she might be able to answer that better than I could.
Can you guys hear me? Good evening.
We can, yes.
So from a credit rating perspective, and those claims going back to the city, each of the subcontractors still have a little bit of skin in the game in terms of the losses. Their experience modifiers will be affected by those losses, even though the city has purchased the insurance. They will each have an individual policy number, and that's how that gets tracked. So that still belongs to the subcontractor.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, followed by Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to go back to the 2.6%, because I'm still confused by that. Can you clarify? Because, and I'll just, real quick, because if I look at Slides 3 and 4, total $675 million, 2.6 of that is $17.5 million. Can you just clear that up for me?
It should be the costs for the membrane bioreactor.
Okay.
And then the advanced purification facility, the groundwater. And you, I don't know if we're including the land purchases as the cost there, but it's the remaining costs for those projects. So our staff calculated that out as roughly 2.6% of this, the projects that this is going to cover.
Okay. Understood now.
2.6% of the cost.
I understood. Thanks.
Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Deputy Mayor Halter.
I'm ready to make a motion to recommend staff's recommendation on it. I think doing the RAP insurance is the right thing. I think we'll get a broader spectrum of businesses participating in the program on it, so I'm going to move staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And Deputy Mayor, okay. So we have a motion and a second. We can vote, please.
Okay, go ahead and enter your vote now on item 23. All votes have now been entered. Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you, staff. Appreciate it. Moving on to, on our agenda for public communications, City Clerk, have we received any additional public communications?
Thank you, Mayor. No additional public communications at this time.
Okay. Then our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, July 1st, and we will adjourn.